Bernice, let me know when we're good. Well, good morning. Well, welcome to the June 18th Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we're going to begin with the roll call.
Supervisor, supervisor, can you hear me? Supervisor Brandal?
Here.
Supervisor Mendez?
Here.
Supervisor Pacheco?
Here.
Supervisor Quintero?
Here.
Chairman Magsick?
And I am here.
All present, thank you.
And before, before we move on to the invocation and pledge of allegiance, a quick announcement. I know about two weeks ago, the National Association of Counties recognized Fresno County for its efforts with the Pavarello House and gave us an award. And I believe I will be able to receive that award here in a couple of weeks when I'm in Tampa, Florida. So it is a prestigious award and I just want to congratulate the CIO's office as well as Sal Quintero. This was something in his district and of course Steve Brandow as well, who worked very hard to make sure that we could secure ARPA funding to build that kitchen for the Pavarello House, which has already served tens of thousands of meals just in the last few months that it's been open. So wanted to share that. So as we now move into the invocation and pledge of allegiance, I'd like to introduce Scott Borman. Scott Borman is the Senior Pastor at New Covenant Community Church and Scott has spent his entire working career being involved as a youth pastor and associate pastor and now senior pastor. Scott Borman loves the Lord dearly. He has gone on dozens of missions trips all around the world, just sharing how Jesus Christ has done an incredible work in his life and how Jesus Christ, of course, can change hearts and minds and to be saved, all you have to do is confess your sins and ask Jesus into your heart. So please rise with me as Scott Borman leads us in the invocation today. Push this.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this morning. Father, we thank you that you have chosen these officials and you are neutral and sovereign over...
Everything. And so, Lord, I pray for this meeting. Father, I pray that for the purposes, Father, I pray that your light would shine and that we would continue to do what is right. Father, we want truth. We want a great county. We want to do what's best for our people. And so, Father, may your light shine upon everyone in here today. And we thank you for what's going to take place. In your son's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, approve agenda.
Are there any modifications to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion. We've got a motion by Supervisor Mendez. Is there a second? Second by Supervisor Quintero. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That passes unanimously.
We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda. Item numbers fifteen through eighty-eight. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item sixty-eight is deleted. It will return to the board to a date uncertain.
All right, thank you. Board members, any items that you would like to have pulled?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number sixty-six, please.
All right, sixty-six will be pulled.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one. Board members, any others? Anyone in the public wishing to pull an item, please step forward and state which item you would like to have pulled.
Good morning, Manuel Cunha. Item number seventy-three.
Seventy-three will be pulled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Tori Madrigón. I'm president to unit eleven. I'm requesting that item fifty and fifty-six be removed.
Fifty and fifty-six will be pulled. Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public portion, bring it back to the board for approval of the remainder.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, with your approval, and the board will take those items out to follow item three, if that's okay with you. We now move item to item three under Board of Supervisors. Presentation of Retired Plaque to Karen Ewing, Department of Internal Services, twenty-six years of service.
And we have representatives here from the Internal Services Department, so please bring the retiree forward and share with us just the incredible work that this person has done.
Absolutely. Good morning, Chairman and Board members. I'm Eric Matthews. I'm the Deputy Director of Information Technology. Today, we gather to honor the remarkable career of Karen, who has dedicated twenty-six years of service to the county. I've had the pleasure of working alongside Karen for the past five and a half years and in that time, I've witnessed her unwavering commitment, exceptional work ethic, and positive impact she has had on all of us. However, to truly capture the essence of Karen's contributions and many years she has devoted to the county, it is only fitting to hear from someone who has worked with her for even a longer period of time. Therefore, it is my pleasure to invite Daniel Moore, a longtime colleague in front of Karen, to share his reflections and experiences. Dan?
Good morning. Daniel Moore, County IT. Today, I have the honor of sharing Karen Ewing's remarkable journey with Fresno County. Karen started her career with the county as an account clerk with Public Works and Planning on March sixteenth, nineteen ninety-eight. In September of two thousand, she joined the IT Communications Team in charge of mobile phone support. Karen remained in this role through the mobile phone boom that started in two thousand eight and at one point, she single-handedly managed over six thousand phones for the county staff. Karen worked with both customers and vendors to make sure the entire county had the mobile technology needed to do their jobs effectively. Several years ago, Karen spearheaded research into the implementation of a mobile device management system, which County IT ultimately implemented and still uses to this day. In her final role as an information technology analyst, Karen was our Change Management Coordinator and a member of our Application Support Team. Throughout her career, Karen was known not only for her technical expertise, but also for her unwavering positivity and infectious smile. And from what I hear, she makes a mean cheesecake. So hats off to Karen Ewing for a job well done.
I'm just grateful that I could give to the county for twenty-six years and that was what I was doing, given it didn't matter what was going on. That was my ultimate goal and I thank you and I appreciate the county.
And thank you for your twenty-six years. And do you have any family members that are here with you today?
I do. I have my husband, my oldest son, my youngest son and his, my friend Veronica.
Outstanding. And here in just a moment, we'd love to get a picture with all of you. Do any board members have any, anything they'd like to add?
Just Karen, I can tell you're vibrant and thank you for serving Fresno County with your vibrancy, with your life for twenty-six years. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Karen, I can tell that you're happy this day's finally come because you can't stop smiling. So it's, you know, just want to thank you for serving the people of Fresno County for for all your years of good leadership and as I mentioned earlier, positivity. I'm sure you infected a lot of people around you with your positiveness. So thank you. Job well done.
Thank you.
And even though you're retiring, you'll always be part of the county family. And so, we appreciate all that you've done here and so thank you for your twenty-six years. And with that, we have some items that we would like to present to you. So if you could have your family members join you now, that would be outstanding.
We're now going to take up items from consent. Item fifty, pulled by a member of the public under Internal Services Conduct Second Hearing to amend the master schedule of fees, charges, recover costs, section forty-three hundred, information technology services.
Ed, the floor is yours. If you can give us just a brief intro on this and then we'll open it up to the public.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, your Chief Operating Officer and interim Director of ISD. The item before you today is a second hearing to amend the master schedule of fees for the Internal Services Department, information technology class or cost classifications. This item was brought to your board at the last board meeting. This is an annual adjustment of the fees that are done every year before the budget so that the Internal Services Department can recover anticipated costs for the next fiscal year.
Any questions for staff on that? Again, this is a second reading. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item, please step forward at this time? Seeing no public comment, I'll close the public portion, bring it back for... I think so. Yeah.
I'm sorry, you said, you didn't say that. You actually said fifty-eight and fifty-six.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion for approval of fifty? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We now move to item number fifty-six under probation, pulled by a member of the public. Approve and authorize the chairman to execute a revenue agreement with Tulare County to house detained youth from Tulare County at the Juvenile Justice Campus.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. Kirk Haynes, your Chief Probation Officer. This morning, we brought this item regarding an agreement with Tulare County Probation Department. It's a newly established agreement and it's based on awards that we received from the state of California as a block grant of one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, five hundred and seventy-one dollars, and a one million separate grant, million dollar grant to create a regional hub for Central Valley Counties as we provide services to youth who have problematic sexual behavior treatment that have been ordered by the court, either in Fresno County or in the counties where these youth may be, where their crimes may have been committed. The Central Valley Probation Chiefs came to an agreement to pool our resources as a result of the Department of Juvenile Justice closing down their operations as a result of SBA twenty-three back in two thousand and twenty-one. Fresno has the available facilities and the expertise to be able to lead this hub. We have, we have youth that are sentenced to this program from both Fresno County and from surrounding counties to be able to provide this service to youth who have been ordered to do this program. The county is going to receive a daily rate of three hundred and eighty dollars per youth to be able to provide the services to the youth that are participating, which equates to about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred per year. And the term that we're going to be working with Tulare County on is for, from July first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-nine. And just a reminder to the board that Senate Bill eight twenty-three, it essentially, it transferred the responsibility of the care and custody of youth that would have normally been at the Department of Juvenile Justice for high-risk youth to, back to the counties. The Department of Juvenile Justice ended any youth admissions to their program back in June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one and then finally closed their doors permanently on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. And all those kids that were at DJJ were returned back to their original jurisdictions. And so now, any youth that would have gone to the Department of Juvenile Justice now are kept by the local jurisdictions in their, in their counties. Of the youth that were at DJJ at the time of their closure, we had one youth that was returned to custody. And so today, we have twenty-two youth who are in our, in our Secure Youth Treatment Facility General Program. We have one youth who is out of county from Merced County, who is in our problematic sexual behavior program now. And we are here today to be able to get, go into contract with Tulare County to provide similar services. If you have any questions, I'm available to you.
Any questions for staff on this one? I may have some, but I want to open it up to the public first. Torrevio, if you can step forward and share with us some insights on this.
Good morning. I don't have a timer good. My name is Tori Madrigón. I'm the president to Fresno County Deputy Probation Officers Association, also county noses as unit eleven. I'm here on behalf of our one hundred and ninety-two members to speak against actually both agenda items fifty-five and fifty-six. As you guys are aware, we are in a side letter agreement right now with our department to help what was presented to us as an emergency based on staffing. However, since working with this institution, we have realized that institution is meeting Board of State and Community Corrections Minimum Standard of One to Ten Ratio without the assistance of unit eleven. These agenda items that our department is presenting have not been presented to unit eleven for immediate confer and directly would impact us working the institution as the start of the contract would be July first of two thousand and twenty-four. Furthermore, these proposed items do not benefit the residents of the county of Fresno. These proposals will allow Tulare and Merced Counties to send both sexual offense, secure youth treatment facility, also secure track youth slash adults, because they are adults, and non-sex offense youth to be housed at Fresno County Juvenile Justice Campus. I'm aware that our county has agreed on March twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-three to allow sex offense, secure track youth from Merced to be housed at JGC, which Chief actually just mentioned that right now, with that agreement ending on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. However, both the new proposed for both Tulare and Merced agreement states that the agreement will also allow the department to house non-secure track youth from Tulare and Merced County in the general population of the JGC, meaning general commitment may also be sent to Fresno County and take up space away from our own population that need a house for their own crimes. Agenda, the agenda items also cite SB eight twenty-three, which the chief just mentioned right now, as being the reason why local jurisdictions are the ones taking over their youth that would have went to Department of Juvenile Justice. However, what I feel with this agenda items, just the previous one that we had spoken against, is just creating a coalition of, it's a brand-new DJJ. We're just making it local. Instead of being on the state level, we're doing it on the county level, on the county dime. Additionally, a lot of these units, I don't know if they're here or not, but this will actually impact them the most because they're the ones that are working there every day. And also with no additional training for these secure track youth who are, or adults that are being housed in there. As it is now, this, this youth is actually housed separately from the regular secure track youth because of his offense and the other minors finding out what his offense is and now they have to house him separately and provide him the same type of services that they would do to the secure track. Also, the language in both items also, if you, in the actual agenda indicates that risk management has reviewed it and they do not advise that the county engage in this contract because it will actually directly impact us. It's actually on unit, page two. It will be one, two, three, four, five, fifth sentence, fifth paragraph down. It states, "Risk management has reviewed the agreement and does not agree with the mutual indemnity as the county is serving as a primary housing and therefore a greater risk." And this is coming from the same risk management that did not allow one of our buildings to get a garbage disposal. So, I mean, if they didn't give us a garbage disposal, they're okay to move forward with this, I find that egregious in nature. Other than that, if you guys have any more questions, I know there's a lot in this, this actual, the whole contract, like I said, we weren't met with for a meet and confer. This wouldn't impact us directly as we're still in our side letter agreement and there's a lot of stuff in here, just in general, that would not benefit the residents of the county of Fresno. There's a lot of shells, not a, and shells, as we know in my line of work, shells is, you need to get it done if not, there's consequences to it and there's a lot of it that's really against us. So thank you for your time. If you guys have any questions, I'll be in the audience.
Thank you. Couple of questions. Well, first of all, is there anyone else in the public that would wish to speak on this item? I'm going to close the public portion, but Torrevio, I'm going to reserve the right to call you back up if we have some questions. Chief, please respond to some of those comments and then I think our board may have some additional questions.
Sure. One thing I will just say regarding unit eleven and the deputy probation officers in the association, the department couldn't be more grateful for the work that they have done to be able to fill in the gap between where we are with staffing of the juvenile correctional officers. They've done a really good job of being able to be there for us to make sure that we meet our Title Fifteen and our Title Twenty-four Board of BSCC mandates. In regard to the agreement, one thing that I want to make clear that the funding that is going toward this program to provide services to the problematic sexual behavior treatment program comes from a state grant. Like I said, we got a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars and fifty, a little over two, a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to be able to provide, provide some of the programming, plus we got a million dollar grant to be able to provide a regional hub for these youth that are convicted of these sexual offenses. And so it's not a, not a Fresno County commitment of dollars, but it is state dollars that are, that are funding this. In regard to the, the work that, that the probation officers are doing with the JCOs and with the JCOs and the youth that are in the, in this unit, we've got one unit, one youth from Merced County who has been with us since October of two thousand and three. Now, he, along with four other youth, are housed in this unit, so he's not being supervised alone in one unit. But the court has ordered, although not SYTF offenders, offenders, but the court has ordered youth into that program that are ordered to serve one year in custody, but ordered to do sex behavior treatment as well. And so, we're housing those youth that are similarly situated by the court, order of the court, to be able to provide those services together. Now, it is true that youth who are in custody, who know that young people commit sex offenses, they can be targets by some of the other youth in custody. Part of the reason why it's a good idea to be able to provide safe housing for those youth while they receive the treatment. So that's just a reality that, that we have to deal with. In regard, and I'll let counsel talk about, you know, in regard to the reason why risk management didn't agree with, with, you know, with the, the portion of the risk that was pushed forward, there is a benefit that we believe that for us to be able to provide this service to the youth, both to Fresno County youth and also to youth of our sister and counties, it's because we've been able to pool our resources to make sure that we can provide the best quality programming for these young people while they're in custody and then the same programming follows them out, transitions them out into Fresno County and then will also provide transition services to the youth that are going to be returning back to their local jurisdictions. The youth that are here from, that is here from Merced County will, once he's released, will be returned back to Mr. Ed County where he will receive continuing services in his local jurisdiction.
So you do agree with the statement that risk management said that they are not on board with, moving forward with this then?
No, not in regard to the programming, but I believe it was in, in regard to the, help me counsel.
I think Hollis is going to come rescue you.
Yeah.
Risk management usually advises against mutual indemnification, but it really is a business decision for the department.
So it's only over the mutual indemnification? Has nothing to do with the risk of taking offenders from other counties and bringing them into our facility?
Correct.
Okay. Understood.
Can I make one question or comment? Chief, it says in the item that both agreements provide that both Merced and Tulare County would be responsible for any damages arising out of or connected with actions and activities of the youth while at JGC. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any, any additional questions? I don't want to hog all the time. Yeah, Steve?
So I think for me, the answer about risk, I mean, the question about risk has kind of been taken off the table as far as I'm concerned. But what about the meet and confer? Deputy Madrigón talked about there had not been a meet and confer. Wouldn't that be kind of normal under these circumstances or does he have a good point there?
He does. I mean, we can certainly do that. The reason we were bringing these items forward is because, like I said, the Merced County Agreement, it's an extension of the agreement that we had in place since two thousand and twenty-three. And so, that one, we had not gone through that meet and confer process because there just wasn't, you know, a desire or there wasn't a request to be able to do so today. Was the first, you know, that we've heard that there may be a request to do meet and confer and we can certainly do that with Tulare County, the Tulare County Agreement. But I believe the Merced County Agreement, since it's an extension of what we've already done, we can certainly, we would move forward with that one.
So a quick question. What triggers the need for meet and confer? Is it whenever the county begins to do something differently that's going to affect the employees? Or is it only when the, the union members request it?
And I think it's, it could be both. I mean, because operationally, I think depending on what kinds of things that probation, what departments are moving forward, it could potentially have impacts, you know, no matter what they are. So we've brought programs forward, not having to have met and conferred on some things and some things we have. And so, when a request comes, of course, we'll honor that opportunity for us to be able to meet and confer on those things. But of course, I'll let counsel or labor to talk a little bit more about that. But I think whenever we have an opportunity to be able to meet and confer, we have no, no issue with being able to do that.
All right, here you go. So county council, are we able to proceed on this? What are your thoughts?
In our opinion, we are. The, the meet and confer that would require, meet and confer before the county takes an action, requires that the county meet and confer with unions when we change the basic terms of their working situation and compensation and that type of thing. When you're doing the same job, just with a different set of people, nothing about the type of job that the people or their pay is being affected here. This is additional programs they're offering children that have been in place for a while and they're, you know, the JCOs are being asked to do the same thing. So meeting conferring with the union in terms of impacts and that type of thing is always advisable just to keep up good labor relations. But in terms of a meet and confer over a subject of bargaining, we don't think this fits within that confine.
All right. Understood. So with that, yes?
I would just add one thing, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with counsel. We're probation, as well as the board, within their authority to move this item forward, but I just believe it's good practice that when something of this nature happens, given that I believe that the probation officer's issue is not the program in and of itself, but it's the additional workload that we are already short-staffed on. Now, again, on one hand, I can see if we have one person from Fresno, we still have to do the program. So if we add two or three more, you're still doing it. The work is the same, although having come from a school board, no, but no teacher wants more than twenty students in a classroom.
Sure.
So on one hand, I can see the validity of that, but I can understand the employee's point of view. They're already short-staffed and yet they're getting more to do, which I believe is really at the heart of the matter and why this is coming forward. I don't believe it's the program in and of itself. And I just feel that in those situations, it would have been nice just to talk to them before it come forward so we don't have these issues and it probably could have been, could have been avoided. But again, I believe you're within your authority to do that, but I understand the probation officer's angst in adding to their workload that they're already short-staffed on.
Certainly. And I can certainly respect and understand that. And, and working with Torrevio, he's been really good in his leadership team with unit eleven. They've been really good about working together and having, you know, remind them constantly of trying to have good communication on those kinds of issues. One thing regarding this program, it could, we could have up to eighteen youth in this program and the way we built this out, that we would never have more than six that would come from out of the county. The rest would come from within Fresno County. Like I said, since two thousand and twenty-three, when we started the program, the court, our court, Fresno's court, has not ordered any youth into the program yet, other than those that are not SYTF. So like I said, there, there are a few kids that are there that are serving less, either a year or less of a commitment. But my assurance to, to unit eleven is that there will never be more than six youth that would come from out of county. You know, if ever we got to the number of eighteen, which I would be really surprised, but the way we built the grant out, we could have up to eighteen youth in that pod, but still be able to meet the, the needs based on the, the funding that's been available to us.
And how many do you currently have now in the program?
We have one in the, in the SYTF program and then we've got, I believe, five others, three others, three others that are in a general commit. So four altogether.
Four. So do you have four up to eighteen? You're going to have to do the program either way.
That is true. If we want to meet the terms of the grant, yes.
Got it. All right.
Good. All right. Now it's time for us to make motions unless there's any other...
I'll make a motion to approve.
We've got a motion from Supervisor Mendez for approval. Is there a second? Is there a counter motion that someone would like to make?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm wondering if it's not too late. I don't know how time sensitive is. Is this has to be done today? Or could we give you a chance to meet with the unit, meet and confer, have a conversation and come back to us and hopefully iron out some of these issues?
The agreement that we have currently with Merced County ends on June 30th of this year. So we'd have to work with, with counsel to figure out how do we, and purchasing to figure out how do we overcome that in order to extend that time.
So in a way, it was kind of brought to us in a way at the last minute then, because we don't have, I don't think we have another board meeting before that date.
We have one, our next meeting's in July. We just have one meeting in July. So if, I hear what you're saying, and I, I've seen us approve retroactive agreements all the time. So here's what I would propose, if, if you're okay to make a motion along the lines of, we'll hear this at our next meeting in July. At that time, we would ask for you to meet and confer with the bargaining unit. As one member, I'm prepared to approve this retroactively since we do it all the time anyways. And that way, we don't delay anything.
I'd make that motion so that we can delay it by one board meeting and then give you guys a chance to get to huddle up and see if you can resolve some of these concerns.
And, and I would just have to say that it's clear in that motion that the board, that the board is not saying that we have an obligation to meet and confer as a management right issue over making this program or adding this contract, but that you would just as a courtesy like to see the meet and confer process on impacts go forward.
Yeah, as a courtesy and a respect. So that's my motion.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carries four with one no.
We now move to item 61, pulled by Supervisor Brandal. Under probation, approve and authorize chairman to execute a revenue agreement with the City of Clovis for dispatch services to the Clovis Fire Department through the Fresno County Emergency Medical Service Communications Center effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I pulled this item, I have to recuse myself, so I'm going to step out of the room.
Yep.
Before you take this vote.
Perfect, thank you for that. Any remaining board members need item 61 presented formally? It's pretty clear cut. All right, hearing none, I'm going to open up to the public. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on item 61? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public portion. I'll entertain a motion for item 61.
Motion approved.
We have a motion for staff's recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries four with one abstention.
We now move to item number 66, which was pulled by Supervisor Pacheco. Under public health, approve and authorize the chairman to execute Amendment 1 to agreement with Fresno Humane Animal Services.
Supervisor, do you want to, or actually, let's have David give us a presentation on this and then we'll hear from the board.
David Lucchini, Public Health Director. This item has come to your board. We're changing some parts of the agreement with our vendor, Fresno Humane Animal Services, shortening the agreement to December 31st to 25, adding some funding because of the cost of running the programs, especially on the services supplies and the cost of veterinary services, animal supplies, medications. So we increased the budget by $500,000 for 23, 24 budget, which is going to be covered by health realignment, and the 24, 25 budget, which we're asking for net county cost. I don't know if you want anything more?
Nope, that's perfect.
Questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I support this item. I pulled the item, understand the necessity of it, fully support the increase. I was going to address under board committee and comments, but felt since this item was before us, this would be the appropriate time. We as a county and the city of Fresno and all of our small rural cities have a crisis right now. The pet population is out of control and currently, I think it should be stated publicly, we are limited and sometimes 100% stopped in receiving animals, and that is a problem. That is a problem. Under no circumstance should we be turning people away. Even if we're at capacity, we have to make do with what we have. We're going to have to put up some temporary things or do what it is. But when our residents call to bring in a stray animal or take the time to bring in an animal, we can't tell them we're full, we can't take it. So I want to publicly state that. I want to state it for the record that we acknowledge we have an issue and that issue needs to be addressed and felt that this item was the appropriate item to do that under.
I understand the frustration, believe it, we hear it too. I mean, it's, it's that balance because even the city got, you know, when they overcrowded and it's illness and then you're euthanizing more. So it's, it's trying to do it the right way with quality and not hurting animal health. So we'll have to sit down and really figure out how we could expand.
But again, yeah, we can't wait until the study is done or shorten it up a year to do it. I'm saying it's an issue now and it needs to be addressed now. However, we got to go about doing that, we need to do that. But we cannot tell our residents when they take the time to bring in a animal that I'm sorry, we're full, take it back home. Unacceptable.
Sure.
Unacceptable.
I think we've all had, you know, calls into our office with the same complaint.
So, and again, it's not just the county's problem. The city has the same, our small cities have the same issue, but we have to take care of our house and we have to fix our problem. And again, I realize the animal compassion, they have done a fantastic job. It is not a criticism of, for them in any way, shape or form. They're doing the best they can with what they got. I realize their goal is to not have any euthanasia, none put down, but desperate times require desperate measures. All I'm simply saying, we have to input the dogs when someone takes the time to pick up a stray and bring it in. We can't tell them we're not taking it. We need to address that issue.
Okay. Now, I'm glad you bring it to our attention.
Any other comments before I open it up to the public? Go ahead, Sal.
David, I've had calls too from constituents regarding the same issues that Supervisor Pacheco pointed out. I mean, there's even, I've even come across some, a group of, of ladies that go out at, at midnight to trap the, the cats in feral and that type of thing. But out of their own pocket, they, they, they spend the money to take them to where they can be spayed, neutered, whatever, and then turn them loose again. Because that way they're not out having cats as well. Is there any kind of program that we might be able to, to come across that they can take these animals to, to get spayed and neutered like one day a week or something?
You know, some of the programs.
But they don't adopt them. They, they just turn them loose because they don't have any room themselves, but they do that just to help the community.
The, the Kirkland one that we're doing that has, is for cats and dogs, that's a program to increase spay and neutering.
Can you send us all an email on that so that we can pass that along to folks that call us?
We'll get that to you. Get that to everybody.
Supervisor Quintero and Pacheco, I think these are all great comments. I mean, we could all make these comments and I appreciate it. You know, what's really amazing to me is our animal shelter is essentially new. I mean, it's like a year and a half old. It's completely chuck full. We've gone, my staff and I have gone out a couple of times to highlight the opportunities that the community has to get, to find a pet there. So, but it's amazing to have a brand new facility completely full. But I do want to highlight the program that David just mentioned a minute ago, because just within the last year, this body has started a pilot program for spay and neutering. And we just took a, a vote on it at our last board meeting to make sure it was extended to the city and rural Fresno County, just to clear all of that up. So we have taken measures to address this, but I'm, I'm with you Supervisor Pacheco. We need to do something. This is a, a, a problem that if you don't address it, it just expands exponentially. And so we have to keep an eye on that.
One comment. This can be fixed with the public. So one of the reasons this is happening is the public during COVID, a lot of people adopted animals because they were confined to their homes. Well, a lot of people are out and about again and find that the pets that they acquired, maybe during COVID, they just could no longer handle. Some of those individuals just let their pets go. Will drive out somewhere, let them go. Others will take them to a shelter and we are overwhelmed. So we need to, the public to be responsible with their animals. Animals are like members of your family and you need to care for them appropriately. And so if members of the public act, acted appropriately with their own pets, we wouldn't be in this situation. And I'm one who believes that we have many challenges that we face, but as the public is willing to be responsible, it means that government doesn't have to get involved in every aspect of our life. And so I would just call on the public to be a little bit more responsible, but to those who are out there trying to do what's right, the county's going to do everything we can to deal with a, a lot of the pets right now who are looking for homes. With that, is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item?
Good morning. Yeah, this is, absolutely. Supervisor Pacheco, you're 100% right. I get calls every week from our growers on what they do with an animal they found that has a broken leg or something. It's in their field, it's staying there by the shop, it's been dropped off on the road along with tires, a refrigerator, you name it. It's a disaster. But I think for the animals, let me tell you, I lived out on Sanger and I seen what was dropped off at my farm. And we have to do something. But I, Mr. Chairman, I believe that USDA, the United States Department of Agriculture has a thing called Rural Development Funds. It's massive. If we can use it to purchase vehicles, to purchase buildings, it's the agriculture industry agency that we should go to them with our legislators and put together a program. Yeah, no animal should be turned away because soon as it's turned away, somebody's going to drop it off on the road and the car's going to hit it. So whatever we can do, and if I could be of help with our USDA agency and any of those agencies, part of the government, if we can give forgiveness for student loans, we dang well should be taking care of animals because they can't think and, you know, we have to be responsible. So whatever we can do in agriculture for my industry, the ag groups, we're willing to do that, to be a partner across. This is just not Fresno County, but it's a disaster and I appreciate you Supervisor for your compassion and all of you, but we do have to take care of the animals. It's not right. And if we can have a neutering program, then let's have it to where it's free and we take care of that problem, you know? So again, thank you very much for letting me comment.
Seeing, seeing no further public comment on this item, I'm going to close the public portion. David, was there one last thing that you wanted to share? Are you, go ahead.
I just wanted to just make sure to clarify when we're talking to people from the public because we do get people come from the city of Fresno because they're getting turned away there. You want, we usually ask the staff to check residential, see if they're coming from unincorporated. So I don't.
Right. The city has their shelter, so they should go to the city, but everyone outside the city should be allowed to come into ours. But yeah, I agree with that.
That's why we make sure that's clear.
But again, we all have the same problems.
Absolutely.
But we need to think outside the box. I think Mr. Cunha's suggestion is an excellent suggestion and that we should explore that, that avenue to get the resources that we need to help this. But I agree with the chairman, it's not an animal problem, it's a people problem. The people are creating the problem, not the animals. But as Mr. Cunha said, it's our responsibility to take care of them and we need to do our jobs.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd make a motion to move this item forward.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
We now move to item number 73, pulled by a member of the public, public health under Administrative Policy 34 for competitive bids or requests for proposals. Determine that an exception to the competitive bidding requirement under AP 34 satisfied and a suspension of competition is warranted due to unusual or extraordinary circumstances and that the best interest of the county would be served by entering into an agreement with Insure America Project.
And before we hear from the public, Paul, do you want to comment on this a little bit or have someone from your office just kind of introduce this briefly?
This is under public health, so we can certainly have David comment.
All right, David?
All right. This is the most we've ever had. So this item is something that you have, you've approved of the past, that they've been very helpful, especially during the emergency response phase in the rural areas and working with farm labors on COVID. But in addition to COVID, we're dealing now with avian influenza, valley fever continues to grow, not only in the valley, but in the state of California, especially on the west side of the valley. So this has been a critical partnership to get important information, education, tests, masking, PPE and all that to, to high-risk and vulnerable populations.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item?
Again, thank you, Manuel Cunha, President of DC Farmers League and the President of Insure America. I want to thank the board, council and everybody. Joe Prado, his entire team, Tristan Barks. Of the news, COVID is still around. I mean, we hear of it, we see of it, and so we continually provide supplies. But what has been a great forward, Mr. Chairman, is the new things such as valley fever. We have a big heat illness program we put on in May to all of our employers at the Portuguese Hall in Easton. We average two or 300 contractors. They are the largest employer. We have about 160,000 farm workers in the valley. And of that number, a lot of employers. But the information we're getting from the county health department through Joe Prado and his entire team has been tremendously benefited. I hear from my growers that we send out this flyer about aviation flu, about the problems with the birds, the livestock, and then we get that out to our growers, our contractors, and it's in a language that they can understand. But the greatest thing, counsel, please forgive me, it's not lawyer written, it's a, it's human written, to understand the basic languages or the issues that need to be confronted by our employees. So it's been a great opportunity of us going out to the fields, to our employers, putting things in paycheck steps that we haven't been doing before, but to alert the public, especially in our industries and the rural communities. And I will say that, yeah, our farm workers don't stay just in Fresno County. They go to Tulare County, Kings County, Madera, up and down. And we provide that information to all of our ag groups, all of the eight county farm bureaus and others, so they could get that out to their employers, to their, to their individual workers that work. So it's been a great opportunity. I want to thank the entire board, the staff, Joe Prado and his entire team and David and everybody for having us partner with them. We actually do go to the fields. We don't, we don't, my thing is you better wear boots, no, no shoes and be prepared to be dirty. So we do that every week. We go in different locations. We work with the Farm Worker Foundation, but the goal is to, to get to the farm workers and making their life better for their families and not allowing them to be put in any type of situation to where they could hurt their family or the disease or the problem impacts them and their families. So again, I just want to say thank you very, very much for the partnership that we've created over the past several years. It's been positive. My Spanish is not 100% good, but I, there's another person that's going to talk. His Spanish is 1,000% better than mine, so I don't get in trouble with the wrong word. So again, I want to thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and staff.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning, board. My name is Luis Ramirez, Vice President of the DC Farmers League and Counsel with Insure America Project. Yes, Mr. Cunha is right. Just to add to his comments, it's amazing going out to the fields and talking to the farm workers and just to hear their, their comments to us saying, you know, thank you. Thank you for, you guys are the only ones that really care for what, what we're doing and, 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 you know, we don't really get that many things for free, they tell us. So just by us giving us supplies, COVID supplies, just forms, any type of outreach that we do, bandanas, hats and all that, they really appreciate it. And so we just want to continue the partnership. We want to thank the Fresno County Department of Health, Joe Prado and Tristan Barks, they've been amazing to work with and we want to continue the partnership. Thank you.
Seeing no further public comment, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for action.
So, just by us giving us supplies, COVID supplies, just forms, any type of outreach that we do, bandanas, hats, and all that, they really appreciate it. And so, we just want to continue the partnership. We want to thank the Fresno County Department of Health, Joe Prado, and Tristan Barks. They've been amazing to work with, and we want to continue the partnership. Thank you.
Seeing no further public comment, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
Second, but I also want to thank Manuel and Luis for all their hard work, because these guys work every day at this. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second to approve the item and also to offer up thanks. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Here is unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes all consent items that were pulled from this morning. We now return to your regular agenda. Item number four, under Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, conduct hearing on petition by Angus Singh Gill to rescind the county sale of APN number 511-240-15S.
And how this will work, before we open it up to the public, I think we've got a representative from Oscar's office or maybe even the assessor's office to do a brief, yeah, Oscar's office to do a brief presentation, and then we will hear from the applicant who asked for the appeal today.
Hi, good morning, Chairman Magzik, members of the board. I'm Frank Gomez, Deputy Treasurer, Tax Collector, and with me is Narin Lunn, Tax Collections Division Chief, and we're from the auditor's office.
Excuse me, could you move the microphone just a, thank you.
Okay. We're here today to ask your board to conduct a hearing on the petition to rescind March 2024 tax sales submitted by Angus S. Gill on April 29, 2024. The property is located near North Brawley and West Griffith Way in District 1. It is identified by parcel number, excuse me, 511-240-15S. This parcel was sold at the tax-defalted tax sale, which occurred on March 14. I will now transfer to Narin.
Thank you, Frank. Good morning, Chairman Magzik and members of the board. The petition to rescind the sale of parcel 511-240-15S was filed within one year of execution of the tax-defalted property in accordance with the Revenue and Taxation Code Section 3731, petition of rescission of tax sale of the parcel. On May 3, 2024, our office mailed notices of the date, time, and place of this hearing to the petitioner, Ms. Angus Singh Gill and Sukbash Rahanwa, who is the purchaser of the property at the county tax sale. Each of them was advised in the notice to submit written material they wished to present to the board during the hearing of the tax collector's office, not less than three weeks to the hearing. To this date, our office has not received documents from Mr. Gill, but did receive documentation from the purchaser. I want to present a reason why our office does not recommend rescinding the sale. In order to rescind the sale, your board must make the following finding based on evidence presented during the hearing, which is that the property should not have been sold. We believe that your board cannot make this first finding. The reason why is that the property was not redeemed before the sale, there was no bankruptcy file, and prior owners was had due process in the form of prior notices before the sale. Before the presentation, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, originally on slide number 18 of our presentation, the deed to purchase was listed as recorded on April 22, 2020. That has been corrected to April 29, 2024, and submitted for the record. We also have copy in the back for the public as well. Okay. And I will now start the presentation. Sorry about that. The annual tax bill and delinquent notices was mailed each year to the Sasiat address shown on the tax roll. Notice of power to sell tax-defalted property, recorded on July 14, 2023. Notice of tax sale mailed to the party of interest on January 26, 2024, published in the Business Journal on January 31, February 7, 14, 2024. No personal contact was visited, was conducted, as it was not required. There was no valid homeowner exemption, and mailing address for the last bill was not the same as the site is. And the tax deed to the purchaser, recorded on April 29, 2024. We want to bring to your attention, in the petition for the hearing, Mr. Angus listed the address 3247 North Sonora Avenue, Fresno, as his return address. On August 25, 2027, the grand deed was recorded to American Truck Driving School. And once again, the address listed was the 3247 North Sonora. And on this, two parcel were listed. On January 8, 2022, sorry. There you go. So, on January 8, 2022, a grand deed was recorded to transfer the title to Mr. Angus S. Gill. And the same time, the same address was listed, 3247 North Sonora Avenue. And once again, two parcel were listed on the deed. In 2023, update mailing address. When ownership change was updated from American Truck Driving School to Mr. Angus Singh Gill on the preliminary change of ownership record, the mailing address provided was 3639 North Brawley. The address was updated in the property tax system. The Brawley address first appeared when the 2022 delinquency was mailed out in June 2022. In 2023-24 tax year, the annual secure property tax was mailed to the Brawley address. This is also established that the address listed on the bill, and the next slide will be showing that. In 2018, 2019, 2020, the address was to the American Truck Driving School on 3247 North Sonora. The same in '21 tax year, '22 tax year. And then in '23 tax year, it changed to the name, to his name, Mr. Gill, and the address was updated to 3639 North Brawley. These are all the notices, delinquency notices. The current year's delinquency notices, again, it was sent to the same address, the American Truck Driving School on 3247 North Sonora for 2017, '18, and '19, '20, '21. And then in '22, it got updated to be sent to Mr. Gill. And on top of the regular annual notices, we have the prior year's delinquency notices. It was also sent to the same address. In each one, the year was listed, each year was added on to the delinquency roll. Again, it was sent to the same 3247 North Sonora, American Truck Driving School. And keep on going, in 2017, '18, '19, '20, '21, the same thing. It was up to the last notices, it was sent to, finally to Mr. Gill at 3639 North Brawley. The subject to power sale was sent to Mr. Gill Angus at 3247 North Sonora. This was the notice of sale of tax-defalted property, subject to power sale, important notice to party of interest. The address, this is the tracking record showing tracking of this particular certified mailing tracking. We got a return for the, so the certified mail return receipt, both the 3639 North Brawley Fresno and the 3247 North Sonora Avenue Fresno addresses are included in the POI letter mailed on January 26, 2024. Below is the confirmed receipt of the 3247 North Sonora Avenue. Once again, 3247 North Sonora, and the signature signed of the receipt. For finding necessary to rescind. One, property should not have been sold. Two, property was not transferred or conveyed by the purchaser to a bona fide purchaser for value. Send the deed to the purchaser was recorded on April 29, 2024. Three, property has not become subject to a bona fide encumberment for value. Send the deed to the purchaser as recorded on April 29, 2024. Four, the purchaser received notice of the hearing as required by Revenue and Taxation Code Section 3731 subdivision B2. Example, property should not have, should not be sold at tax sale. One, when property was timely redeemed, but was then erroneously listed for auction and sold. Two, when the property owner filed for bankruptcy, which should have stopped the sale, but the tax collector proceeded to sell the property anyway. Or, three, when the tax collector failed to give all notices required by law before the sale. Recommendation, staff believe that the first finding for the property should not have been sold, cannot be made. Two, staff believe that the sale of the property is valid. And three, staff recommendation is not to rescind the sale. So, the tax collector's office satisfied all legal requirements to sell property at the tax sale. Therefore, the tax collector believes the recommendation to your board that there is not sufficient evidence to make a first require finding that the property should not have been sold, and therefore, the sale should not be rescinded. That's the end of the presentation.
All right, thank you for that. And before we open it up to the public, I know that some of our board members may have some comments on this item. I'm going to start with Supervisor Pacheco, because it is in his district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In our packet, we have attachment page 11. I'd like to see that up on the board, please. No.
You're referring to the map.
I want this.
The map, right?
Yes. I want to see this for all of our board members in the public. This is the key.
Oh, back there, there's one on the back.
It's in the board packet, not in what they presented.
I'm pulling that up right now. Yeah, that's the one right here. Can we project this? Can we project the screen?
Oh, yeah, but it doesn't matter.
Sorry. Yes.
There we go. Now, show us, for all of us, what is the subject property we are talking about?
15, right here, 2.12 acre.
15. Yep.
You got a pencil?
Yeah. So, that was the, that was the property that is, that was sold?
Correct, yes.
Does the applicant own any other property around that area?
This particular one right here, 16S.
He owns that one?
Correct.
Have all the property taxes been paid on that property in a timely fashion and up to date?
When Mr. Gill came, his son, I believe, came to our office regarding 15S, we notified him as well that 16S was outstanding. He initiated the payment and made it in full during that time.
And what date was that?
I believe it was around, he came. Give me a moment, sorry about that. It should be around March, after March, right around after the sale.
March, after the sale?
After the sale.
So, if the applicant owns both properties, why was only one sold and not the other one, if they were both delinquent?
This particular one, 16S, I believe Mr. Gill came into the office and paid it in full in May of 2023.
In May of '23. See, so we need to establish a timeline here. So, in May of '23, on 16S, Mr. Gill came and paid in full. Is that correct?
Yes, it was around May. Let me find the exact date.
Well, that's all right, May's close enough. And then when was 15S sold?
It was on March 14 of the tax sale.
Of '23?
'24.
Okay. So, on March 24, 15S was sold. But in May of '23, 16S was paid. And at that point, was he notified that 15S was also in delinquency?
Notices were sent out. When Mr. Gill came into the office, he claimed, well, our records showed that he only requested record for the 16S, not the 15S.
Okay. Well, again, we're going to hear from Mr. Gill here. It's my understanding, and again, this is from him, when he approached my office, that his property had been sold. And of course, I take that very seriously when a government takes someone's property and told them, you were five years, you didn't pay. So, after five years, you force our hand, and we have to sell the property. Well, he informed me, he didn't realize there were two APN numbers, which maybe we'll wait and hear from him in a minute. So, that's why I'm curious. If you know that, you're assuming you're paying on everything. And if you don't know there's two, then obviously, you're not going to pay the other one. So, that's why I asked you, when he came and paid the one, did someone inform him, your other one is delinquent as well? And I get the addresses and all that, I fully understand that. But we have to hear from him, where were you living? Where was it mailed to? Whose signature is on the paper that we sent certified letters to? Is that his signature? If it's not, then for me, as a supervisor, that means nothing.
That's page 17 in the deal you just handed us.
Yeah. See? So, again, those are some of my questions, because I take this very, very seriously, is that when we see someone's property, we better have all our Ts crossed and our Is dotted. Because now, you're asking us, or he's going to ask us to rescind it, which, like you, is very difficult to do, because the person that purchased it did nothing wrong. So, no matter what we do, someone's going to lose in this situation, because the government took someone's property and sold it. Now, if he didn't pay his taxes, that's his responsibility, and that's the way it goes. But if he's not notified, then through no fault of his, we have an issue now. And that's what it's going to come down to. So, I appreciate your presentation. I'd like to hear from Mr. Gill one more time, because he tried to convey this to me in my office. It's very, very difficult with what you just presented and all of those letters and deli- but if you don't get it, it means nothing. So, again, when we do this, it's very serious for me personally, I got to tell you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other members have a comment?
Yeah, I just got one more question. Now, when you met with him, you knew there was an outstanding debt on the neighboring property with his name on it. Nobody had told him that?
Are you referring to the time he came into the office, Supervisor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was he notified that there was another piece of property that he needed to pay for that was delinquent?
I can't.
Speak for the person who was working with him, I don't know.
I, that's kind of where I'm at. It's depend, depending on how many people, how many customers the public walk into our office, it's depend on what kind of question Mr. Gill would have received. If he could have, if he walked in and only presented, could you search for property under my name? Or could you search a property under the address? Staff is trained to just respond to the question. I don't know what Mr. Gill would have asked during his visit. I did speak to my staff who actually assisted, and they, as you can know, there are so many publics walking in office day to day. They cannot recall an instant except the note that they left on the log when he made the visit.
Question is, there's not that many people walk in that are five years late.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Question is, you don't have a lot of people that are five years late that walk in to pay.
Correct, but unless we search specifically for a particular parcel, we cannot, unless we know if the property is listed on his name or it listed on the, for example, if at the time, his business was listed on the American Truck Driving School.
I'll change the question. Is the piece, the parcel we took in the same name as this other parcel that he paid? Or is it in different names?
Um, let me see. It should be on the American Truck Driving School and then later transferred to Mr. Angus Gill.
No, I'm saying, on the day he paid it, was it the same name as the parcel we took?
Doing that. It should, let me.
A yes or no question.
It depend, because during that time, was the transition between the transfer of his ownership from American Truck Driving School to Mr. Angus Gill.
On the day he paid it, whose name was it on? Yeah. That's an easy question.
It would have been the same name, the two-
It would have been the same name. The, the two parcels are listed on the deeds that go between the, the two.
I know, but I'm asking her that question.
And in her defense, looking at the, some of the tax billing documents, 2223, it was under American Truck Driving School, Inc. And then 2324, it's listed as Gill, under the Gill name. So I don't know, when, was that change done before May of 23 is the question?
So the 22 tax year was sent to American Truck Driving School, but the notices, delinquency notices does pull the latest record that came from the, the ownership record. So it did went to Mr. Angers. So if he came in that time during the transition, it could have been listed on the American Truck Driving School and not under his name.
Got it.
But just for clarification, it would have been, both parcels would have been listed one way or the other because they were both.
Yes, depending.
Well, they would have been listed the same no matter what.
Yes, but again, it would be depending on how Mr. Ang, Ms. Gill would have asked the question. If he only presented the part, the address and not the name, I, I can't.
I, I can understand that. Supervisor Mendez and I, we have property as well. We have multiple parcels under the same name. So I, I can understand what you're saying. But again, I want to hear from the applicant. I'm telling you, as an individual, I can understand the confusion because that little piece is cut out. And I'd like to see the grant deed that you provided earlier. If the grant deed lists two numbers, then it's the owner's responsibility to know that there's two numbers. If not, you think you're paying one, not realizing you're paying a piece that's cut out of your big piece and you think everything is good, when really it's not. So again, I appreciate your presentation. We're going to have some more questions. And let's hear from the applicant because this is pretty serious business right here. Go ahead, sir. Well, let's hear from the applicant. Yeah. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. We're going to open it up to the public. And you're going to have more than, than three minutes. So please share with us your information in regards to this.
Good morning, I know, Chairman. Good morning, all the members.
And please, please. Please speak close to the microphone.
Yes, sir. So never been to the situation, saw a little hesitant. And on May the 17th, I went to the county office with that exact map and the bill I received with this, with this bill and that map and asked them, let me know with what I owed because I'm going to leave out of country. My wife had a coat blue overseas and I have to leave. So particular this, I have few other properties, but that particular day, I just came for this property. Want to make sure I'm up to date. And the cashier told me you owe seven grand. I cut a check and left, you know. And she failed to give me the information. I knew something is wrong. That's why I came. Ever since we bought this property, we never receive any bill. Neither American Truck Driving School receive any bill. Neither I myself receive any bill. Okay? Not even a single bill. So when I came by, after the property was sold, I came back to the country and find out if any bills so far is paid, you know, that was at least, it would establish that you guys were sending, these people are sending bill, but I was not paying. But not a single bill was sent. That's why not a single bill was paid. So I was paying on this parcel, the small parcel. That's what they were sending. That's why I came here to check. Let me know what's owed or delinquent or I need to bring this up to date. And I did bring to up to date. But when I left out of country and I started seeing the spam calls, that property sold, as my son called me, say, there's something about the tax. I said, no, I went there May 17th. So, and I took care of everything. Till the next May comes, I was under impression that if you don't pay your bill for one year, your property will be sold. So I said, no, we still have till May to pay this bill. But go ahead. And when he came to the office, the date they're she referring, and she was, I was told that my property was sold. That without our knowledge, I was not here. And about those notices, Mr. Pacheco was telling, those were not my signs because I was out of country. They sent two notices, one to the Raleigh, the physical address. It was not signed. They have the record. And another, I don't know who signed it, where the sign came from. Those not in my signs because I'm, I was out of country.
So a question, I think staff said you came in and you paid for that one parcel May of 23?
May 17th, 23. And this is the copy.
So were you out of country then for?
After that.
No, but for a year? How long were you gone out of country?
After that, I was gone for eight months. Till I find out this, I have to leave my wife and come back and take care of this.
Okay. Okay.
Sir, what, what is the American Truck School? Is that your company?
We own, own that school and we never see a bill on that either. We search everything. And ever since, we're receiving bill on the small parcel and we've been paying on this parcel.
And then what is the two addresses? What is 3247 North Sonora?
That's my home address.
That's your home address?
Exactly.
And you've lived there for an extended period of time?
Yes, sir.
And then what is 3639 North?
That's the physical address of this property.
And what is on that property?
It's one home and the weekend lot. So we park, next door, next to that business where it says 1.37 acres?
Yes.
That's our businesses. That's where truck school is. So we run our business on there and we use this for storage purpose and other purposes.
I see. I see. So you operate your truck school on the triangle?
Yes.
And then you purchased this next property?
Yes.
Okay. And when did you purchase this property?
It was under American. We bought it somewhere in 18 or 22, I don't remember. And on the 20, then I changed it to my, we dissolved the corporation. So we put it under our name.
Understood. So on that grant deed, are the two numbers listed on the grant deed? So how, how did you get to the confusion that you're paying one and not the other?
I wasn't aware of this, but the, how the tax bill was coming and I was some doubts until, till the property was sold, I didn't figure out. This is going to come to know when the property was sold, that that's what happened to me. So I was under.
I don't want to see the slide. I want to see the original grant deed with the stamp on it that shows it's the official. I don't want to see this. I want to see the grant deed.
This is the one. So this is the.
Right there, on the right. Right there. That's the grant deed. Does it list APNs on there? I, I can't read it from here.
That's Exhibit A. This is the parcel.
Oh, fifteen and sixteen S?
Yes.
So it's on your original grant deed, sir. You have two APN numbers and you're only paying one. That's a problem.
I completely understand, sir. I would never receive a single bill. Always asking to the office if you can find a technical glitch or something happened. If I'm paying for the one, I can pay for second. I have funds in my account, you know. And that particular day, a few other properties, I'm, might be delinquent or whatever, but that particular day, I was here to take care of this particular property.
Which I, I understand that. And again, I'm only trying to be fair and equitable here.
Completely understand, sir.
But you purchased the property. It clearly says on your grant deed, you have two APN numbers. And yet you come in on May 17th of 2023, and you pay one of the APN numbers, but you don't pay the other. And you've not received a bill in five years.
No, sir.
You, as a business owner, knows nothing's for free in this country.
Completely. Completely understand. That's why I was there.
And we have taxes due each and every year. And, and if they're not paid, or you're not getting a bill, as a property owner, you're always wrong. And that's the way it works. No matter what happens, the property owner is always wrong because we own the property.
That's why.
If we have two APN numbers and you're paying one and you don't get the bill, it's your responsibility to come in and check.
That's what I did on.
Without a doubt.
That's what I did on.
And everybody makes the mistake, one year, two years, three years. But to let this go five years, that's a little hard for me to take, I got to tell you. And I'm just being upfront and honest with you.
I completely understand, sir.
Yeah.
That's why May 17th, I came here to take that, resolve that issue. But the.
You only did one, not the second. And you, as the owner, on your grant deed, you've got two numbers. But you only solved one. You didn't solve the second problem.
I request them to give me the information. If they're not giving me, sending the bill when I'm physically there, they're not providing me that information. There's no way as a citizen, I, I won't get that information from. That's only from my source. That's my last, last source. And at that time, I thought they took care of that problem when I paid seven grand.
No.
They gotta be, they never figured out if they're in a technical glitch, why this guy's not receiving bill. All they keep on, office telling me, we check mark all the places. We send you notice. I'm not here. The notice won't do me any good. But if I'm paying for one property, why not paying for my other? I ask them questions. They have no answers for me. All they're telling me that, we check all our boxes and that's it. And that's why I was there to May 17th to take care of that problem.
So, so you're telling us that when you went in there and you paid the one, and you asked about the other one, and what was the response?
So I.
Because you're the only one that knows. We're all, none of us know. And the person who ever took your money, obviously, that's pretty hard to find who that is. And with all the hundreds of transactions, it's pretty hard to remember one conversation.
Yeah, the map I submitted to you, same map I gave it to them. This is my property, you know. I want to pay all my taxes due. And that's as a citizen, we can do. We can bring them the, what we need. And what she did or how she did, she's the expert, you know. I'm not the expert how to handle this. What the numbers means till this day, I don't know. We're the simple, hardworking people. Just send us a bill, we cut the check and we're done with it.
So from the Auditor Controller's Office, you've just heard it like us. What's your response to that? When he's telling us, he asked for it, and he wasn't given the bill?
I mean, it was the same name, same property, same everything. It's right there. Everything was there, but they failed to give me the information that particular day. Plus, for five years, there was no bill. And there got to be something wrong. If I'm getting one bill, not getting another bill, there got to be something wrong. And especially, I'm coming here to take us, that day, that information was not provided. What my choices are, you can tell me, sir.
A quick question I have. What prompted you to come in in May of 23? Did you receive a notice in the mail?
No, nothing. So the bill was liquid, awkward, a little less what I thought. And I thought that was a weekend land. That's why it's not much.
But you, you said that you came in because the bill was less than you thought it was?
Exactly.
So you received a notice in the mail?
No. The bill I'm receiving, this bill.
Yes, that's your tax bill.
Small parcel. I was receiving this bill.
But so you did receive a bill from us?
No, for one parcel, for, not for the other parcel.
Who, who did you receive that from?
From this, this, I'm receiving a mail. So for sixteen S, I've been receiving all the mails, everything. But for fifteen S, I never received.
So for sixteen S, you knew that you were delinquent and you came in and paid sixteen S. So a question I have now for the Auditor's Office. For fifteen S, were you sending those notices to the same address as sixteen S?
It's the same address.
It's the same address you were sending. And were there any notices that were sent that had both properties listed on it that are delinquent? Or were there two separate notices?
There will always be per parcel, so two separate notices.
Two separate notices. But with the same address. So that's, that's where there's a bit of a, bit of a disconnect.
That's pretty strange, you're receiving one bill and not the other one. Neither noticed, nothing on coming on that parcel. First impression was from the office because that particular parcel does not have address. That's why you did not receive that notice.
I got another question.
Sure, go ahead, buddy.
On page 17. Show them page 17. It says page 37, slide page 17.
Pardon me, sir. There's a lot of stuff in there. I never received it.
Did you find it?
Yeah, I think it's that one.
Okay.
It's this one, yeah.
Yeah. Hand them that pa, piece of paper. Is that your signature?
No, sir. It's not. Plus, there's another notice like this and it's a blank. They should be in the records.
That's, that's good in, in your favor. However, again, I have experience in this.
Yes, sir.
And when the mail delivers that, they don't specifically ask for that person. They just want someone to sign for the document. But it does not specifically have to be you is the problem with this system. So I don't know how we would go about it, but we would need to see whose signature that is. If it's a family member, an employee or something related to you or your company, then that shows that you or someone, a representative of you, received that document. That's, that's an issue.
I completely understand, sir.
Yeah.
If we received that notice, you know, we would have taken that problem right away. I would not lose that $400, $300, $400, $1,000 property for some 27 grand when I have a funds. Always asking is, I need something to tell me that pay me. I will pay it. I'm paying for other properties. I'm doing everything in my power to take care of that. But if I'm not getting those notices or anything bills, there's nothing I can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further public comment on this, and we've heard from the person who has appealed this, I'm going to close the public hearing on this. Bring it.
Do you have a purchaser here?
Is the, is the individual who purchased the property in attendance with us today during the tax sale? You don't have to speak, but if you are here, just raise your hand. Okay, so the individual who's here who's purchased the property, I don't know if any board members.
No.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing unless you want to share anything. All right. They've indicated they don't want to share anything, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, what would you advise us at this point? We need to weigh the evidence that we've just heard and come up with a determination?
That is correct. I think if the department can put back up the standards of the findings the board needs to make, the board should go through those findings and determine whether they can make them. Remind you that the tax sale process is designed to allow the tax collector to operate if they follow their rules. You know, sometimes there can be very tough problems that come up when somebody doesn't understand what they're getting in the mail. But the sale process is designed to be certain for the tax collector and certain for the public.
Board members?
Question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to just ask a question that, in a way, does not tie in directly to this situation that happened today. But as, and so this is for the Auditor's Office. If, as we approach a sale, and you know there's going to be a sale, is there any final effort to connect with the person? Or do we just rely on, well, they haven't been responding to their mail? So that means they don't care anymore? Or is there any, like, final, like, we know we're coming up to a tax sale, that's going to be a problem for somebody, we're going to make an extra effort here? So I wonder if there, if we don't have that final opportunity, if we could create that? Because I would like to avoid these situations in the, in the future. And maybe that goes beyond just relying upon the mail. Maybe it should be a personal.
Personal visit.
Connection or a personal. So I would like to see that corrected moving into the future.
Quick question. During this tax sale that was done a couple of months ago, how many parcels were auctioned off? And I believe it took almost all day or maybe even two days. Want to say that there were dozens of properties that individuals had chosen to not pay taxes on.
I don't have the total off the top of my head, but it was a double tax sale. So it was a significant number. It did take a whole day.
Yeah. The reason I wanted to raise that up to the board is, it is amazing to me how frequently individuals choose to just let parcels go. Some of it is where family members have passed away and no one, you know, no one really knows or wants to deal with a particular piece of property. Some of it are obscure pieces that are not worth very much money. The taxes owed are much higher than the, really the value of the property. So that becomes a challenging situation. But just for the record, I wanted to throw that out. But to the extent that we can do all that we can to notify owners of property, I think that's very important. I would agree with Supervisor Brandal.
To address that, we did implement that. We, since last two years, when I took over, we initiate any, the moment the notice have gone out, the tax sale notice, we, anyone who attempt to make contact, we track their name, their phone number. Our team do last effort to call repeatedly again and again to see, are you aware the tax coming up? Should a mail, notice of sale get returned to our office, we initiate a skip tracing to attempt to notify and search for the last known address that we could attempt to contact.
So we, did we make a phone call?
We.
An attempt in this case?
We, if, there is a known phone call on, that we have been keeping track somehow that was in our record, we will attempt it.
And it's not, you know, to be clear again, that kind of effort is not required by the.
It's, yeah, it's not.
Understood.
Well, we, we understand that, but we're saying, we would like it to be. I, I completely agree with Supervisor Brandal because this puts us in a very, very difficult situation. And again, I can understand the frustration and the anxiety of losing a piece of property. But again, if we were to rescind it, then the people who followed the law and did everything the right way, I don't feel it's right to take it away from them either.
Correct.
So there is a, there's, there's no, no winning in this. There is no. So there is a, there's, there's no, no winning in this, there is none. So I believe, even though we're not required, I believe like Supervisor Brandal. And to me, it's a business. It's a known business that I believe we should make the effort, not with the phone call, but we should knock on the door. That way, there's irresputable evidence that we did everything we could, they cannot deny, because we have a person that went there, that it's logged in, we knocked on their door, we stuck it to their door, we left it there, we did everything we could, so that we don't have to do this again. I don't know if you realize how uncomfortable it is to do what we're going to have to do here in the next few minutes. We have 7,000 employees for this county, surely one can go knock on a door before we take someone's property away. I don't think that's being too unreasonable. I realize it's above and beyond, but this is not a good thing to do, that this board is going to do right now.
We do visit the, so personal contact is required. But this particular property was not, it doesn't met the requirement, so we did not attempt a personal. But I understand that you would like.
Again, I I get it, I get it. I am not here to meet the minimum standards, I try and achieve above and beyond.
Understand.
Yeah, and because you work for the county, that this board is telling you we want to go above and beyond, we now have to raise our expectations to go above and beyond if you want to work for this county.
Understand.
So it is time to.
I got one last question, has he applied for the excess money?
I do not know whether he's applied, but he would be eligible for it.
Right.
Did it sell for more than the value?
There is an exit proceed of $148,071.3.
$148,000?
Yes. In excess proceed.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see what happens, but I would definitely want to fill that form out.
All right, board members, what is your pleasure?
Well, Mr. Chairman, it's in my district, so I feel it's appropriate that I make the motion. While I definitely feel for the individual, I think as a property owner and especially a business owner, you have, or you should have known, you should have known that you owe taxes each and every year. And if it's not being paid, again, while we should have reached out and maybe have gone above and beyond, not just the minimum, I do believe as a property owner, it's your responsibility to make sure that all of your fees and taxes are paid. He did it on one, he didn't do it on the other. If there was confusion, I could have granted a lot of grace to that. However, it clearly states on his grant deed, there are two APN numbers. So when you paid one, in my opinion, you should have paid the other or known you have need to pay the other, because you have not received the bill in five years. And again, as I stated earlier, nothing is free in this country, especially when it comes to property. So with that, it'd be my motion that we deny the appeal and leave the sale as is.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
So inform, you are entitled to now apply for the excess, which is a large excess above the tax lien.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, there's a request from you to take up item seven. So we're going to take up item seven under Public Works and Planning Consider Appeal Planning Commission's Dial of Unclassified Conditional Use Permit Application Number 3751.
All right, we'll hear from staff on this one, and I know that your presentation will be very concise, because there are members of the public who'd like to speak, and we appreciate that, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Brandl, Public Works and Planning. This item was originally heard by your board on April 23rd, where you granted the applicant's request to continue the item to a date uncertain. It comes to you from a decision of the Planning Commission on April 23rd, where there was a vote to deny, 5-0, with two absences and one vacancy. The project is located on the north side of Shields Avenue, approximately 640 feet east of the north, North Bryan Avenue, about 1,300 feet west of the city limits of the city of Fresno. The proposed conditional use permit would allow high intensity park with related improvements for outdoor events in the rural residential zone district. The applicant's operational statement proposes 60 events annually, with activities ceasing at 10:00 PM. The peak activities do occur during the months of May through September. If your board chooses to uphold the commission's denial of the conditional permit, you would be appropriate to make a motion to do so based on the ability to make finding number three as described in the Planning Commission resolution. If your board chooses to define that it can make the required finding, it is appropriate to make a motion to approve CUP 3751, stating the reasons for the findings that can be made or by pointing to the descriptions of the findings that are in the staff report to the Planning Commission that recommended approval. On screen is a aerial map of the project. If your board would prefer, we have a short PowerPoint presentation we could make. And that concludes my my presentation, unless you have a question for me.
Any questions of staff on this? All right, seeing none, I'm going to open up the public hearing at this point. What I would like to do is I'd like to ask for the applicant to step forward. We'll start with his representative, I think Dirk Pushel is the representative. And Dirk's going to make a presentation, and then we'll hear from people who are in support of of this proposal. And then we will hear from individuals who are against or have concerns, and from there, we will move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Dirk Pushel, and my business address is 923 Van Ass here in Fresno. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, who are a group of local businesspeople who bought the property. I'm going to be very brief and focus on the required findings. Finding number one has to do with adequacy, there's no concern there, we only use about 3.3 acres of the 17 acre site. Traffic is a concern. We hired Peters Engineering, it's one of the two civil engineering firms here in Fresno. We studied five intersections, we studied warrants, collisions, and levels of service, and also VMT. There was no concerns that were raised by the traffic study relative to the project. There's two existing driveways, which have all been improved. And we also pay a a traffic mitigation fee to improve neighboring roadways and a regional traffic fee. Of course, finding number three is the potentially most significant. We hired a noise acoustic specialist who provided recommendations for the location of the amplifiers. I want to say for the record that we intend to control the music, the amplifiers, where they're located, and also to purchase decibel meters so that we can monitor the the noise levels and that the speakers never move, and that they be in enclosed structure. Lighting was also a concern, we have pictures if you'd like to see them. There was concern raised at the Planning Commission, we have clear evidence that the lighting that is annoying to our neighbors is not coming from our property. We have, there's, there's, there is support for the project in the area. We have proposed, again, significant noise mitigation, controlling the amplifier, reading the decibels, and that if there was concern about the location of the speakers, that we would, could reengage the traffic, excuse me, the acoustical engineer to come back and make new readings. We sent out three different notices to our neighbors for three different outreach meetings. There were 61 of those notices that were sent out. I believe that we had a total of about six people. The applicant can talk about that, because they were there, but I think we had six people that responded to the outreach meetings. We do believe that the findings can be made, particularly finding number three as recommended by your staff. The applicant would like to speak, I think they can provide more detail as to their intention to use the facility and their commitment to be a good neighbor. But I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them of me.
Brian, this is in your district, you want to go first, any questions yet? All right, any other members? All right, we would, we would like to hear from the applicant. So at this time, I'm going to open, open it up to people who want to speak in favor of this proposal. Now is your time to come forward and share any information that you think is important for us to use in our decision.
Good morning, Chair, name's Paul Brar, bear with me, barely been able to speak today, so. Our project is really a fruit of what happened during the COVID. There's a group of us, originally we started out as 18 members, I think we're now 14 members. Purchased the property, we thought we can kind of have it as an outdoor place for to have our kids and our guys to get together. The person we bought it from, she lived in the house for about a year, she was retiring, so that was her condition. So we didn't really do much with the property for about a year or so. We built, I don't know if you're able to see the picture on there, but right behind the house, we built a basketball court. Is there a picture we can change to? Maybe I can do a visual. But on on this screen, right where that plus 326 on the blue is, to the left is where we put up a basketball court for the for the kids. Let's see if I can get a visual there, okay? Go to another one, just kind of gives a better view. Okay, so the the area you see there is the back of the house, the house sits to the right, there's a shop straight ahead. To the right of the car is parked, and the area on the left is what we have developed. Literally, it's just a base level, we started with some cement basketball courts, and then there's some green grass and some palm trees that we put up. So our initial project was just to have a place where we can take the kids out of the house and places to go, because a lot of places are closed. And a lot of the kids that play basketball in our group, they weren't able to go out and play anywhere, they needed a place. Couple of our group members, sorry, a couple of group members, their kids were getting married, they wanted to have a party, they were having a hard time getting some places booked, so we ended up having two parties in 2022, I believe. After the events, you know, recommendations were made, suggestions, hey, maybe we can open up an outdoor venue, and that's how this whole thing started. To date, I think we've only had three parties, two of those were prior to 22, that you would consider a large party. We had a few birthday parties and a few other things, and my kid graduated, you know, we had like 25 people out there. I wouldn't really call that a party, we were really a private residence. We did inquire to get some permits or parties, and we were told if it's a private residence and you're not going to sell alcohol, there is no permitting process. So we didn't really have any rules that, you know, we had abide by per se. But during this process, you know, we came to know, this is what we need, there's a timeline, there's, there's music, certain amount of music, you know, and we did the studies, and what's the loudness of the music needs to be. So some of the complaints we had are prior to that time.
Supervisor Mendez says you can speak longer, so go ahead.
Appreciate it, thank you. Maybe I run out of my voice here. So that's kind of where the project is headed, you know, we we learned, we did the studies, we invited some neighbors, few came. We invited some more, you know, we basically invited the same people three times, very few have come. We've gotten complaints from some of the neighbors that are far away is 2,000 feet, like seven football fields. You know, we're kind of in the middle of, off of Shields between Hayes, and then I think the other side, I'm not sure what the other side is, Bryant, right? So some of the neighbors highlighted in red are the ones that are opposed to the project. The ones in blue are are immediate neighbors, they are not opposed to the project. So I, you know, we're just having a hard time understanding when when you're that far away from the project, the sound interferes, you're having complaints about music, when we've already went over the studies and mitigated the sound that needed to be controlled, and there's controls in place. And that's part of this whole permitting process, is that we want some control. You know, we're willing to follow the rules and things that are put in place, and we really haven't had any other events, you know, significant events. I think we may have a graduation for one of our members' kids, we haven't done any outside events. We're, we are not open to the public, you know, I mean, we're going to be a private venue. However, we will allow kind of the rules, if you know somebody, you have to be referred by somebody, and that's kind of the the project. We're not going to have events year round, it's limited, it's going to be controlled. And I feel like we've been good neighbors, you know, we've been there four plus years, we haven't had any complaints. Someone's come to our house and say, hey, I got issues with you. We kept the place clean, and by looking at, you know, we, we haven't done anything to make it stick out, it fits in with the neighborhood. It's a country setting, but the city is coming. You know, right to the north, where it says subject property, there's already construction for new homes. They're already digging up the septic lines. So we are not in the country anymore, we're literally in the city, and the city is coming, you know. And unfortunately, some of our neighbors feel like, you know, they still are in the country, and they're entitled to that, you know, peaceful living they're used to. I just feel like our project doesn't put the burden on that, it's just the growth is coming. And either it's us or somebody else, you're not going to have that same setting anymore. So that should be.
Thank you for that, and actually.
Counsel?
We're gonna, we're, one of our members is going to recuse themselves from this item, and so actually, Sal, I think you need to.
And then counsel, I have a question too, because this is a land use issue. If we've had any contact with the applicants or anyone in opposition, are we not proper to disclose that?
Yes, that would be proper.
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, then at this time, I travel by this on a weekly basis and part of my normal routine. I have been on the property prior to any of the the construction, it was several months ago, and I have received numerous calls and have met with individuals both in support and in opposition of this. So I want to fully disclose that for the public record.
And I too have met with individuals who are in support and opposition of this as well, for the record.
Same with me.
And I've been to the property and really only had discussions with those in support.
All right, now that we've made sure that that's clear on the record, any questions that board members have for the main speaker here?
No.
All right, we appreciate your comments, thank you very much. Anyone else in support to add additional information that has not been presented? Again, in support.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board of supervisors, my name is Ramesh Kaisariel. I'm one of the members of CV Alliance Partnership, a group of businessmen who own the project site. I have lived, there's a house on the property, I have lived there for three years. Keeping a project clean and well managed is a task I have volunteered to assist our group with. Living on the side, I can see the property essentially at all times and can monitor it for vandalism or for activity that could be disturbing to others. The last thing our group wants to do is to annoy any of our neighbors. A primary project purpose is to have a venue where people could peacefully enjoy leisure time and with their families. I'll be available during all events to make sure they run smoothly and are in compliance with the project conditions. I have introduced myself to neighbors, they know, if there are ever any issues of any kind, they can talk to me directly. Thank you for your consideration for the project.
Thank you. Don't be shy, as soon as that microphone comes available, if you're in support, just.
Yes, good morning, honorable supervisors, my name is Kulwansadu, I'm a proud member of the Quanta Service Organization, and also a representative of the Punjabi community. As a community liaison and a volunteer, I'm here today to express my strong support for this proposal. Our community is in dire need of this space, a space like this, and I firmly believe it will greatly benefit our residents and future generations. Thank you for considering this proposal.
Anyone else in support? All right, I'm going to. All right, I'm going to close that off, and I'm, oh, if there's someone in support, please step forward. Oh, yes.
I have to go all the way around.
Not a problem.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Bosler. I'm a teacher and a high school basketball coach in the community at Justin Garza. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Community places such as this benefit others outside of the quote-unquote "membership." Any place that allows our youth a safe place to engage in activities is desperately needed in our area. I have benefited that as a friend on an occasion or two where we needed a space for our kindergarten, first, second, third grade basketball teams to have a place to gather and practice. We're often looking and renting out places around. This is in our community, and it is safe, and the environment there has been fantastic for us, so strong support for the project.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further members wishing to speak in support, I'm now going to open up the floor to those who wish to speak in opposition to the project. Please step forward.
Good morning. My name is Dale Yandel. I'm the one in the red there that they've spotted out me on Hayes Avenue. I can see direct distance in their backyard. Yeah, they've invited me three times to their events, but to me, I saw no reason to go, to go look at an open field or a basketball court. And I'm set on my ways. They're set on theirs. They've got a good idea. I understand where they're coming from, but it's the wrong location. They say they're doing a high-intensity park theme party building, whatever you want to call it. But they turn around and say it's for private use only. High intensity means they're trying to rent that out for money. They're planning on using it every weekend or at least during spring, summer, fall. What are the neighbors supposed to do for their evenings, for their weekends, in their backyards? We've had, yes, the gentleman was correct. It's been good the last year or so. But during winter, you're not going to be doing anything outside, basically. But they've had parties there. One went to three-thirty in the morning. The music was so loud, we had our doors shut and couldn't hear our TV. It's just, the sound carries out in the country, which I think everybody knows. It's not zoned for what they want to do. And they're changing so much zoning nowadays. Where can a family go and have peace and quiet without worrying about the neighbors wanting to put in a event center? There are three little parties they invited, me too, were from three to five, usually on a Sunday evening or afternoon. And again, it's just a good idea, wrong location. There's plenty of events centers in the area that they could rent to do their parties. Thank you.
Good morning, and I appreciate that to hear that some of you have taken the time to go out and view the property. I too am a neighbor, and I'm raising my kids out in the country. I have several concerns, and this is, I want to say, my third time of coming and taking time out of my life to make sure that you're hearing all of us that do choose to live out there. First of all, I'd like to address there's one hundred and twenty-seven parking spots. Okay, that should ring loudly to you as to, that doesn't mean one hundred and twenty-seven people. The noise pollution, again, is loud. There was a presentation presented, but not one of those pictures showed the tent. And when we see the tent go up, we know that that's going to be a big, crazy evening, and the noise levels are completely out of control. We live in a neighborhood. This is a neighborhood. There are houses all the way around. I agree with the man who spoke earlier, like, this is just not the place. There are several venues in the area, and I don't need to name them to you, Mr. Pacheco, as I'm sure you're quite aware. There's several. The safety to me, I have a new driver in our household. I have children. I'm very concerned about the traffic, and the man who spoke prior about doing the studies in the area, I'm not sure where he was studying, but I'm pretty sure that they probably didn't do the intersection of Bryan and Shields. When the processions come in for these large parties, the traffic goes past Hayes to Polk. You can't get out of the driveway. You, it just goes on and on. There's not a break. That's a two-lane street, one going, you know, east and west, one lane of each. It's not safe. There, the streets out there are not made for the type of parties and the population that these people are trying to bring in. The lighting is also a concern as it's lit up like a football field, and I'm right across the street. What about the water? I know that we recently had trouble with our well, and we're told that the water tables just keep lessening and lessening out there with the growth. We're talking one hundred and twenty-seven parking spots, several hundred people, dishes, toilets, hand washing. They're talking about this being a community center. It's really not a community center. It's a venue. And the seasonal aspect of it, you know, we have seen and heard parties year round. And it's private. I have a son. He's never played basketball over there. I'm just very worried about it being right in the center of our neighborhood because we have children to raise, and we're doing things out in the country. Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
I also have a letter from another neighbor that was unable to take the third day off from work, and I was wondering if I could give that to you or read it.
Give it to the clerk. The clerk will distribute it to us, and we will make sure that that becomes part of the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello. Can you hear me? My name is Jenny Ricardo. I also live on Hayes and Shields. The only thing that I have to say to you is that we have nineteen venues within a five-mile radius from our homes. We don't need another one. We moved out into the country for a reason, get away from the chaos, from the city, the traffic, the noise. We want to be able to sit in our backyard and relax. And what about the others who have animals, horses, cows, pigs? Their animals go crazy with that music. We don't need anymore. So please, please help us. Keep them away from us.
Good afternoon. The safety issues regarding the community center, which is really a party house, I would imagine everybody's experienced, you know, having a neighbor throw a party into the late night. Maybe you give them slack because it's once, right? This is going to be going on, what? It's a short season from May to September, sixty parties a year. Think about how many that is. What, three a week? They go on until three o'clock in the morning, and the sound is so loud, it shakes the windows and the walls of your house. You could put earplugs in, you could still feel the noise. The base is just off the charts. As far as the so-called, you know, the first gentleman that was here on the studies, you know, for the intersections, I would request that you guys check with the sheriffs and the high patrol on all the accidents that have occurred on Shields and Bryan Avenue. It's a terrible road. There's been a lot of accidents. People have died. Right there at the corner of Shields and Bryan, and like I said, there's a lot of, a lot of accidents. And we're basically about a hundred, hundred and fifty yards maybe from the so-called event center, which is a party house. And when they got it going, I mean, like I said, it shakes the walls, it shakes the windows, and, you know, earplugs don't help. As far as the, and I would also ask that you guys check the sheriff records on all of the complaints that are put in on the noise, because they don't shut it down at ten. You know, they'll shut it off for, say, you know, ten minutes, twenty minutes, and then it's back on to full blast. And they'll shut it off, turn it back on. It goes on until two or three in the morning. And, you know, me personally, I got to get up early. I go to work early. I got to get up at five. I'm sure everybody else, you know, that we're working people. You got to get your sleep. Again, if this was just a, you know, a once-in-a-year deal, yeah, you could handle it. You wake up tired, you know, maybe you finish your sleep, you know, get your sleep, you know, on the weekend. But this is going to be going on. Again, sixty events from May to September. And again, it's not just the basketball. This is going to be, you know, a party house. They're going to, you know, people are going to pay to have their events there, and the music is turned up loud. It's not, it's way more than what they're describing it as being. It's not just basketball. It's not just kids. It's going to be an adult event center. Adults are there, teenage kids, you know, blasting the stereos. The sheriffs are already overloaded. There's been several times when they've had their parties, I call the sheriff's department, hey, it's past ten o'clock, it's eleven o'clock, it's twelve o'clock, they're stuck out, the stereo's blasting. Well, we're really busy right now. Well, the sheriffs are always really busy because they're understaffed. Is this a good use of, you know, of our public resources, having the sheriffs, having to keep going to, you know, ask them to turn the stereo down when as soon as the sheriffs leave, they turn it back up?
And sir, I need you to wrap up.
Yeah.
I do have a question. Which one of those houses do you live in?
Bryan, Shields. I think we're here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is West?
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Yes, like I've said before, the kids are welcome anywhere in our neighborhoods to play basketball or do whatever they want on other people's property. We've got acres out there, okay? So it's just not a venue for their nationality or nationality. Anybody can play. This is a venue for their nationality because there is fifteen other places in our area that they can have parties, including the house over by the high school. That place, when they built it, they had to dig, take their property and dig this huminous hole out there, like a big subhole, and the party house is in this big hole that the noise doesn't go out. They're on the main street. The fire department and the police department has been in our area nine times in the last twelve days, fourteen days, because of fires. People are arson. They've set my corner of Hayes and Shields on fire four times in the last two weeks. And the fire department could not get there during the day, let alone in the evening. They had five trucks out there trying to stop the fire, and the amount of traffic that is now flying down Hayes Avenue through stop signs, they finally put four stop signs on the corner of Hayes and Shields, but they still run them. We have accidents out there all the time, fires now of people setting fires. Our area out there looks like there's been a war because of all the fires. The trucks can't even get around the corners. If something happens in the afternoons and we got all these vehicles out there, the vehicles, the fire department and the police department is not even going to be able to get there. And we're going to have enough trouble with all the new housing out there. I was talking to the people that are building the houses. They are so close together. We used to have an ordinance of the houses had to be certain length apart, you know, width, the wise. You could actually sit on the toilet, because I've done it, going through these houses because I was thinking about selling my property. I wanted to see what these houses were really like. They are so close together. They were talking, you guys were talking about a new fire station. We don't need a fire station. The houses are going to burn down before the fire department even gets there.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Seeing no further comments in opposition, I'm going to close the public portion and bring this back to our board for any additional follow-up comments or even motions, depending on what this board wants to do.
If you want to go, Supervisor Pacheco, but I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Supervisor. I'll wrap it up.
Okay, so I think most of my questions are to the staff. So I want to understand this. This is in the county, because it's why it's here, but it's inside the sphere of the city of Fresno. That is correct. It is correct. So I mentioned that I got a chance to go out to the property, and you can see some construction kind of going on, maybe a quarter mile away. You can see that, I think they're building, and it might be multifamily or something like that. So in general, the city of Fresno's plans would be to, I mean, so people who say, you know, I came to live in the county, I totally get it, but the city of Fresno is moving that way. Is that correct?
That is correct. The higher-density housing is being constructed within the city limits.
Right, so this is just the beginning of these type of issues, and we've already heard them, you know, at other locations. How about, how about the sheriff's department? Have we, have there been any citations to this property?
So staff reached out to the sheriff's office, which provided the information that there were six calls for service between September of 2022 and February of this year. I also talked to code enforcement staff who confirmed that the last complaint we received is in February. So that would align with the last noise complaint, and it was generally associated with noise. That's why the sheriff went out there.
And then, okay, so the sheriff got called out there. Was there any citations?
My understanding is that I don't see that they said that there were any citations. They simply spoke to the, spoke to the operator and indicated to keep the noise down.
Okay. The reason I bring that up, because I have a property in Old Fig that the neighbors don't like, and they call the sheriff all the time. They call the sheriff all the time. And then I feel obligated to follow up on that, and I find out, oh, yeah, the sheriff was called, the complaint was made. But when you go out there, the sheriff doesn't cite anybody, or they might tell him to turn down or just keep an eye on the noise, but there's no extreme violation that. So calls for service or a complaint, to me, is not the same as our sheriff went out there and said, this is all wrong. You guys are shutting down. So to me, those are two different things, so.
And I should clarify, my request to the sheriff's office was calls for service. Wanted to know how many times they were called out there.
Yeah, so six, right?
That's correct.
Okay. But, but, you know, there was no, you know, nothing that was citation given at that time, I guess. So, you know, I want to hear from my colleagues. I got a chance to go out to the property. When you're standing out there, you know, it's impressive. I, you know, I like the concept of the kids playing basketball. The basketball court's top quality. There's multiple hoops, and it gives a lot of opportunity for kids to play. I, you know, but they have an expanded area of grass and some palm trees put up. They, on one of the perimeter borders of the property, they put up a line of trees that are now growing. I think, I think that is going to. I think, I think that is gonna help visually at least. I did get to see the lighting that was, you know, the lighting. And there's, right from this photo to the left of this basketball court is a, is another property where a guy has parked some trucks and vehicles. And that guy actually has very tall lighting in his backyard to keep, to keep security on those trucks. And I really think that that lighting, this location is getting blamed for the truck, the truck area's lighting. But anyway, I guess that as I get older, I get, I'm getting less patient with pure, unadulterated nimbyism. So when we hear stuff like party house and it's, it, all this stuff's going on until three AM and talk about concerns for the kids and fire trucks can't get out there anymore. And I've just, I've just heard all that stuff long enough that I'm not impressed by it anymore. If we had calls for service and there were citations being made, I think that would be a problem for me. But I'm gonna be very supportive of this property today. I think they're doing a, a good job. And I don't know if we put parameters on their time and operation. So for instance, before they had a CUP, I could see some guys slipping up and that party going late in the evening. Now they're applying for a CUP, that falls directly under control and we could put time limits. And then if they go beyond those time limits, the sheriff's department can cite them. So I think, I think what we're seeing today is the next level of control over this property. And I think that the applicants are willing to abide by Fresno County's rules. And so those are my thoughts.
Supervisor Mendez, any comments? All right. Supervisor Pacheco.
Okay. District one has a lot of issues today. So a good deal's generally always been taught when everybody is happy. I don't think there's gonna be any good deals today. So the next best thing on a good deal is everybody's gonna have to give a little bit. As a member of the rural community, I can fully appreciate the comments of the neighbors because while I live in a very unpopulated area, when my neighbors have a party, I can hear their music till eleven, twelve o'clock at night. So I have great issue with that. In addition, last night, as I was having dinner with my parents, they always ask what's on the agenda on us, so we got a tough one today. We have a community around residential neighborhoods, there's been some noise issues. And my mother's the first one to say, our neighbors have a party and we can't go to sleep and you can't allow that kind of thing to happen. So that, that carries a lot of, a lot of weight with me. And, and again, I wanna be clear, if there's fourteen owners, they're free to do whatever they so choose as the owner of that property. It's when they choose to lend it to other people. And as the one gentleman said in the beginning, they, you have to know somebody, it's not just gonna be open to the public. So they will have some, some control over that. And in looking at this, I looked to District Five and you Supervisor Magzig, when a year or two ago, we had a horse venue that wanted to have a lot of public events. It was even a sparser neighborhood than this and the neighbors came out and said, we don't want this in our backyard, like Supervisor Brandal mentioned. And we worked out a solution there where we put up some guardrails on that. And I think this is a situation that we can try and accommodate both. So both sides are gonna have to give a little bit. It would be my, my recommendation that while the owners can do whatever they want, when they want, if they choose to lend this to a friend, that they will be limited to ten events per year. I believe that's what we did on the horse, it was either ten or twelve. So on this first year, I want ten events. I believe all activities should be shut down by ten PM, which was another requirement, which means event ends at nine thirty and cleanup and everything is out at ten and lights out at ten, so that we avoid all of those issues. If an event alcohol is served, I believe we have a rule or requirement already on the books that you have three security personnel for every hundred people. Is that accurate, Mr. Mata, or what is our rule on that?
Generally for these types of facilities, yes.
So that's standard practice. So I believe we should have that standard practice. When I drove by, I believe the lights are from the different venue. As Supervisor Brandal said, I don't believe the lighting issue is here, but if we have all lights out at ten o'clock, we'll know if it's them or the neighbors or not. So I believe that again is a, is a reasonable request. The only issue, what I really appreciated on the project is all parking is inside. So there's no parking on the roads or blocking the neighbors' driveways or any of that. When they have an event, I believe that all parking will be inside the venue. There's enough space for that. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
So that, that shouldn't be an issue. So I'm okay with approving the venue with those parameters set in place. But I need to hear from Mr. Pushel if they're agreeable to you, because if not, then that would change my opinion on this. And again, these are for a one-year conditional use permit. If we have issues that the neighbors come in here again and say, hey, they had a party till three o'clock and all that, then we revoke their CUP and they're only back to personal use. So we have a little teeth in what we do. I believe they wanna be a good neighbor. One of the neighbors said they've done it, they can tolerate it a few times a year, but let them put their money where their mouth is. And if they are a good neighbor, then we'll extend the CUP. And if not, they'll have one year and then this will no longer be in existence. And I believe that everyone should be given the opportunity. And this is their way to prove that they can be a good neighbor with these parameters. So that would be my motion, Mr. Chairman, if the applicant is agreeable to what I've laid out.
And just to clarify, Mr. Supervisor, with limiting it to CUP that's one year long, then the applicant would need to apply for the CUP to get it continued at the end of that year?
Correct.
Be the normal process.
Isn't that how we did yours, Mr. Magzig?
Well, actually, there's, I think there's another way to do it. If we condition it, grant the CUP with the conditions stated, but in one year, we are going to review the CUP and then make any modifications at that point. We can do that, but we direct staff to bring this back within a year so we can evaluate and make sure that the rules are being followed.
Yeah, so I'm not trying to recreate the will. I'm trying to put equality and equity in what we did for Supervisor Magzig. I think the same should be granted, granted to this applicant and so that everyone's treated fair and equitably and the same, whether you live in District One or District Five. That's all I'm trying to do.
So we're not, we're not granting a one-year CUP, but you're asking for a review of the
So I wanna review then. So I may have stated that inaccurately. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
And if I may, does your motion also include the indemnification agreement?
Without a doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. The only question I have is, we do have some kids that come out and play basketball during the day. I just don't want that to be considered these ten events.
That would not be an event.
Okay, I think we're okay with that. So basically we.
These are nighttime events. I'll specify that for nighttime events.
We're in agreement with that.
Yeah, when people wanna go to bed. But during the day, if this coach here wants to have his team, that doesn't count as an event. I believe you're being a good neighbor, you're helping the community, you're helping the youth, you're giving them something to do, to show them the right path rather than do something mischievous. And that would not count as an event. It's only night events is what I am referring to.
All right. And then one more thing to the neighbors that didn't make it to our meetings. We, the ones that did show up and the ones we talked to, we are gonna open it up for you. All you have to do is come see us. If you wanna book it for a kid's birthday party, your kids wanna play basketball on a certain day, just let us know, we'll book at time.
And the one man here in the blue shirt, he actually lives on the property, correct?
Yes.
Do I understood that right?
So it is a home. One of our members, he's one of our members, he actually lives there. So if any of your neighbors, they wanna have a little birthday party, one of them said they called, but we weren't doing any bookings, we don't have a permit. You know, so if they wanna do that, we're, we're gonna honor that, we're still open to it, anybody that lives in, so the list of people that were sent these letters, we're gonna give them that option. All they have to do is contact us and we'll figure out a way to accommodate.
So again, Mr. Chairman, it's, we're not gonna have a win-win. I think everybody gives a little bit and we can try it for a year and let it prove that they can be a good neighbor.
And then too.
That would be my, my motion, just.
Yeah. And then too, that they're subject to all noise violations and everything else.
Absolutely, yep.
So I mean, even on an afternoon event, you can't go out and, you know, have loud speakers that you can be heard, you know, a mile away, Claire.
We have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second for the comment.
Yeah, I do wanna ask, so then when we review it in a year, we could make amendments at that time?
Correct, yes.
Without it having to create a whole separate CUP?
Yeah.
And we could, we could make, create more restrictions?
Yep.
Or we could actually alleviate some restrictions?
And then what we did in Supervisor Magzig's district, we went from ten to the following year, they were allowed, I believe, fourteen or fifteen or, because they originally asked for twenty-five or thirty and we started at ten or twelve. So I'm just trying to follow the same path.
Yeah.
That's how it had already been established to be fair and equitable for all the residents of the county.
Yeah, I like that. If we can also at that time look at extending or alleviating if we haven't had any citations from the sheriff's department or fires on the property?
Yep.
Or some of these things, so, all right.
We have a motion, a second. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then motion passes, four with one abstention, a recusal. Recusal.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna move back to some items that we jumped over.
Yes, item number five, under the administrative office, adopt a resolution approving a recommended budget of the county of Fresno for the period between July first, 2024, and the Board of Supervisors' adoption of the fiscal year 2425 final recommended budget.
Thank you, Paige. And I know that brevity is a good thing.
Yes, Paul.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I am going to abbreviate and actually jump right to introducing Paige Benavides as our Budget Director. This is a presentation about the recommended budget from July first of 2024 until your budget hearings in September. I'll have Paige give a very brief overview and ask and enter any questions that you may have.
Good morning, Board, Paige Benavides, County Administrative Office. This item comes before your Board each year at the last meeting of the fiscal year. The recommended action is to approve a recommended budget for the period of July first, 2024, through the adoption of the final recommended budget in September. The recommended appropriations and revenues are based on the adjusted fiscal year 2324 budget to provide appropriations for county operations to continue until the final adopted budget is approved. Budget hearings will be held the week of September sixteenth. And holding budget hearings in September has been in place since fiscal year 201819. This allows for the closing of the previous fiscal year books and the calculation of actual available fund balance for the following fiscal year. It also allows departments to account for the impacts of the state budget, which is adopted by the legislature mid-June. Actual assessed property value also becomes available by the end of June. With respect to the state budget, the joint legislatures, state legislatures' budget for fiscal year 2425 aligns with the bulk of the governor's budget proposals, but includes restorations of some social services, health, and housing programs. These funding restorations will impact the county's Health and Human Services departments in varying degrees. However, given the state's uncertain revenue picture, departments will be taking a more conservative approach, should these cuts be reinstated throughout the year. Those will be addressed in the recommended budget to be presented to your Board in September. Notably, May 2024 state income tax revenues were more than $2 billion above the May revision projections, but again, it remains to be seen if that is just due to a timing difference. In terms of the county's revenue outlook, assessed value impacts the majority of eighty percent of total countywide revenues this year. And sales tax, the county's second-largest discretionary revenue stream comprises approximately eight percent of total revenues. As reported to your Board at the mid-year budget update a few months ago, Bradley Burn Sales Tax revenues are down year over year. However, year-to-date receipts have improved slightly from being down approximately two percent from last year to now down less than one percent. Maintaining a conservative approach to budgeted sales and property tax revenues continues to be the goal for the upcoming recommended fiscal year 2425 budget. And with that, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Paige. Any comments from Board members? Just to point out, because we've moved, I think about six or seven years ago, we moved to adopt the budget in October, this is almost like we're approving a continuing resolution so we can continue to spend with programs. So just for the public's knowledge, so.
Wouldn't really wanna compare us to the federal government on a continuing resolution.
That's why I said like, like, that's the closest comparison I could.
I'd wanna avoid that comparison.
Very good. Duly noted. With that, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to comment on this particular item? Seeing no public comment on this item, I'm gonna close the public portion. We have a motion to approve this. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
We now move to, we now move to item number six, under Public Works and Planning, approve and authorize chairman to sign a resolution establishing a list of road and bridge projects to be performed with Department of Public Works and Planning.
Good morning, Board. Erin Higginson, Program Manager with Public Works and Planning. I have nothing further to offer into the record unless you'd like to see a short presentation on the item. But in the interest of time, we don't need to do it if you don't want to.
So I think the, the report very, you know, it speaks for itself. Any questions for Board members? This is very, what's being recommended is very similar to what we did last year. Really appreciate Public Works working hard to keep our roadways in the best condition possible. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on our road program and the work that's gonna be done? CIP. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, entertain a motion for approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for that great presentation.
We now move to item number eight, under Public Works and Planning, conduct public hearing to receive testimony on proposed county-community development, housing, and homeless program activities that will be funded by federal grants.
Good morning, Supervisors and members of the Board. We have nothing further to add to the record aside from the public comment, which we're required to do.
Anyone, any Board members have any questions on our CDBG or home program? Seeing none, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this program? Seeing no public comment, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the Board for action.
Motion approved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Mendez, a second by Supervisor Pacheco. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it carries unanimously.
We now move to item eight point one, under Social Services, approve the signing by each member of the Board of Supervisors on the LIC nine one six five form.
Good morning, Board members. Sonia Bugue, Director of Social Services.
Can I speak close to that microphone, Sonia?
Sorry about that. And I'm gonna be brief as well and hand it over to Dan to help explain this item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. This item is to formally address the situation dealing with the approval of the MOD-C facility on the UMC campus as a traditional shelter care facility by the Community Care Licensing Division of the State Department of Social Services. We passed this, the Board passed this item on February sixth. At that time, the Board was instructed that they could designate the director to sign what is the LIC nine one six five form. The staff of DSS, State DSS requires now that we have each Board member, since we're gonna be, the Board will be serving as the governing body of the transition, of the shelter. And so they requested and demand actually as a condition of licensure that each member of the Board sign that acknowledgement of that, having received that information.
All right. And with this particular item, it's, what's being requested is very unusual and some things that I would like to see happen, I will state after I close the public portion. Any members of the public here to speak on MOD-C and what the state of California has asked us to sign individually as Board members? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the Board. With this particular item, since we are gonna be sitting as a Board of Directors and we have to attest that we have read through, and actually, we need to know a lot of the regulations, even though there's some. even though there's some argument one way or another against that, I'm, I'm willing to move forward and sign this, but I would like to see at some point, this county either, um, appoint a Board of Directors or form a nonprofit that can have a Board of Directors that, um, operates this way. So just being involved with a lot of nonprofits, and I know Supervisor Pacheco as well has been involved with different nonprofits, there is a, a layer of responsibility that comes there, and I do have some concerns if there are issues in the future that come up with MOD-C. But recognizing that we need this license now, I'm willing to, uh, sign this to get this done. But, uh, moving forward, I think we need to look at other options, uh, so it, it takes this Board out of the, the line of fire, so to speak.
And Mr. Chair, I'd just like to state for the record that, uh, we did, uh, try and clarify that with the State Department of Social Services, that the Board sits as the governing body, not as a nonprofit Board of Directors, and that by signing this form, you don't take on any other obligations or responsibilities other than what you already did by approving the contract, uh, to operate the transitional shelter as a county shelter.
And the county, of course, with us signing this, you will, um, defend and hold, um, each Board member harmless, correct?
Yes.
The answer is yes to that. So with that, um, I will move for staff's recommendation with the understanding, we'll look for other options to offload this responsibility from the Board as soon as possible. Is there another, is there a second to that?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to item number nine, Board of Supervisor Committee Reports and Comments.
Any, uh, comments? We'll start with Supervisor Brandow.
None.
Supervisor Mendez? Supervisor Quintero, Supervisor Pacheco. And, uh, just want to let you know that I appreciate all of you. You guys are like, I'm sitting next to four other Solomon, and uh, it's amazing. So I counted an honor.
I'm sure we made a lot of friends today, Mr. Chairman, yeah, with all of our decisions.
We should declare today District One day.
Yeah.
Because it was all about District One.
I'm sure it's even gonna get better in the minutes to come.
Very good. Next item.
We now move to item number 10, Board Appointments.
Any appointments? We're gonna start with Supervisor Brandow, Supervisor Mendez, Supervisor Quintero.
I do, Mr. Chairman. Continuing the theme, I would like to reappoint Mr. Chuck Rios to the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board for the Joint City County Labor E-Position for a term ending November 1, 2025.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Um, anyone in the public wishing to comment about the appointment of Chuck Rios? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public portion, entertain a motion for approval. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously.
We now move to item number 11, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved to persons who are injured or address the Board on any matter not on this agenda.
All right. Now I want to remind the public that, uh, to limit comments to 15 minutes per topic. So if, if there's anyone here wishing to comment on any items that are not listed on the agenda, now is your time.
Hello.
Make sure you talk close to the microphone.
My name is Willie Jean Bass. Good morning, Councilman. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. I'm speaking on behalf of the medical insurance under the SEIU 2015 in-home supported services. I am employed with this program, and I am grateful for the opportunity to have this employment. I am a mother, a single mother, of a disabled child. He was born with pre-medical conditions. Because of this fact, I have to stay at home to care for him. This employment does support us with our basic care, so we do not have a lot of money. But it also provides insurance, medical insurance for me. I have migraines, and they're very severe. But in 2022, I woke up one morning, and I didn't know what was wrong. My body just collapsed. Well, I called Kaiser, and I described to them what happened. They told me to come to the emergency room right away. Come to find out, I had a growth on the brain. Because of the insurance that I received through the in-home supported services, I was able to get the right treatment, the right care, and the medication. Without this, um, insurance, I don't know what I would have been able to do. And if he was to take this away, I don't know how I would be able to pay for insurance care. I don't know how I would survive the migraines without the, um, medication. See, this insurance is critical, not only for myself, but also for the care of my son. Ah, forgive me. This is very emotional for me. Um, not only for myself, but I'm sure there's many individuals that stands in my shoes who rely on insurance care. So I ask each of you to really think carefully and long before making the decision to cut back on the funding that allow us to receive the health insurance that we really, really need. I thank you for the time for allowing me to stand here and present to you today.
Hello. Good morning, gentlemen. I'm part of SEIU. There's our T-shirt. Um, I am an employee of the SEIU, which is the Service Employees International Union. Um, I'm one among 1.9 million. It's one of the fastest-growing, uh, unions in North America at this time. And, um, I'm here to speak on behalf of this because I understand that, uh, I guess monies are being cut. They want to take away our insurance, which, uh, is Kaiser Insurance right now. Um, I'm currently insured through Kaiser, but, um, I plan to retire within the next two years. Um, it's basically to take care of my mother, and she's under this program. And I take care of both my mother and my, um, stepfather. My stepfather's in a wheelchair, can't do much for himself, and, um, it would just be beyond me to put them in a home which they can't even afford. So it'd be really not very good care. Um, but I'm here just to speak on behalf of not just myself and my family's situation. Um, my Kaiser benefits when I retire from Fresno Unified will be cut off once I retire. So I will no longer have Kaiser. And I would like to remain with Kaiser as I'm a, um, I took early retirement with B of A. I worked for them for 32 years, and I retired in 2013 and then took on the job at the school district as a bilingual aide. Um, again, I've worked 40 years of my 61 years, and I feel like it's time to help Mom out. So, um, but it just, it's really gonna be hard because, I mean, I'm in good health right now, but who knows, you know, later, um, how am I gonna care for Mom and, and Dad if I, if I'm not healthy myself? So I really need my medical insurance, just like we all do. And I just think it's a human right to have good medical care. Like they say, health is wealth. And, um, I'm, I'm, if I'm healthy, I mean, I volunteer at my church. Um, I run our program at Celebrate Recovery, been doing it for the last 13 years. Um, while I'm healthy, I'm, I'm out to help our community. Um, I'm a mentor. Um, I help out our church. I'm an altar worker. I mean, if my health is there, I'm out to help the community as well as my family, and I hope you guys can, uh, understand that. Um, people that are healthy can do things for other people and help out the community. And I'm willing to do that. So thank you for hearing me out, and have a wonderful day.
Hi. My name is Oka Vaye, and I didn't want to bore you today with being up here, being the same person. Like you said, you're tired of seeing us, hearing us. So I brought, um, a friend of mine, Rachel, and I wanted you to see a little bit of our struggle, which I think you saw a little bit, just in the time that we, they were in here. And we have many families like that. So I'm gonna leave the rest of the, the presentation. We have many families. We belong to different, uh, organizations where our children have autism and they have other ailments, so, or, or conditions. So, Rachel?
Hi, I'm Rachel Hill. Um, I have my oldest son. He will be going into fourth, and he has severe autism, and since over a year, he's, was diagnosed with epilepsy. Um, at the time, he was going to Cedarwood Elementary. Um, and, uh, and they were very helpful in understanding in that process. Um, but when we came along this IHSS thing, I was like, amen to it because it was a godsend, just because I'm like, how am I gonna have proper funds, like, to do your everyday living, groceries, rent, clothes, all that kind of stuff? And having a special needs child is even more cost because you have their special vitamins, their medicines, their special foods. And mine likes fruit, and fruit is expensive. And so I'm here just to advocate for all the amazing mamas out in our autism groups. There's tons of them. There's two different groups. And it is very hard to get here today. As you could see, um, I wasn't sure I was even gonna make it, but I'm here just to, to share the importance of how important it would be to get this 20 an hour for us because we would love to be able to have some way, normal life and be able to do the nine-to-five job, but we aren't. Our job is our child. And it is very hard. It is a battlefield. You never know what the day's gonna bring. Um, and so I'm just here to advocate for that. And to say, I'm gonna throw this out here, like, the fast food workers, they're getting 20 an hour now, but a she, a machine is taking your orders. We're taking orders every day, high-demand orders from our child. And it's exhausting at times. We don't get a moment for ourselves. I, I am not qualified for a respite caretaker because of my child's epilepsy, and I hardly get a break. And so to be able to have this extra funds toward us would be really great. Not just in my behalf, to any parents with a special needs child. It is such a godsend, and I just pray that this will happen. And those that need this, um, health insurance coverage, I pray that that comes forth for them too because they need good insurance. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, Board. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name's Melissa Hernandez. Um, I've been a Fresno resident for 47 years, and, um, I love Fresno. And I want to continue to be proud of Fresno. Um, but right now, I'm not. Um, I'm not, um, proud of how, um, our elderly and disabled are being treated because they aren't getting proper care. When, um, their caregivers are not getting paid well enough, they're gonna have to seek elsewhere to be able to make a living. And, um, when elder, elderly are not gonna be able to have caregivers in the home, they'll have to go to facilities, which they're already, they're already full, so they can't get the care that they really need. By paying caregivers livable wages, you can have quality people in their homes, taking care of them, taking care of those that are disabled, and being able to give them, um, the kindness and dignity that they need. So it's not asking much for, for to give, um, caregivers livable wages. It is so difficult to, um, make a, a living these days. You can't even, um, you can't even live on your own. You have to rely on family and friends. So please, I want you to consider to, um, make Fresno a place that we can feel proud of, that we can brag that, yes, Fresno cares about the elderly. Fresno cares about the disabled because we do right by them. Show it by your actions and what decisions you're going to make. Thank you so much.
Hello.
Paul, uh, my name is Janice Caruso.
Please come a little bit closer to the microphone. It's hard for us to hear.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Janice Caruso, and Mark here is my provider, and I've had him for over two years. And he has been instrumental in helping me get through my days, even some weekends. And his health insurance is so important to him. He has other issues going on physically, and he's there to do it whenever. I was taken sick a few days after knee operation in the beginning of May, and he was there late at night, taking me, taking charge and so forth of what he needed to do for me. And I have a dog, and he was there for him also. But if you take away his insurance, you're gonna take him away from me, and I'm gonna die if that, you know, I have MS. And I'm eventually gonna die, but not right now. But he is the best help I've ever had in this organization. And if you take away his health insurance, he's gonna die also. And we just need to keep this going for the people that help us who cannot really do a whole lot on their own. Yes, I'm standing. I have trouble with my knee right now because it's only a little over a month. And, but he's here for me. If I need to go into an early appointment, he's here for me. And he, he has his own life, and he has his own little house stuff that he has to do and another client. So if you take away the insurance from him or the other people, you're just putting us clients into a slow death. Possibly a quick death, depending on. But it's needed, and they need to keep going and keeping their life situated like mine is right now. It's very, very settled. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And we, uh, we have time for about maybe a speaker and a quarter. So unless if individuals keep their comments to about two minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm here again. My name is Jim Grant. I'm here on behalf of my daughter, who is, um, actually, as we speak, being cared for by a SEIU 2015 IHSS caregiver. To think that at this point in our history, in this country, and in this state, and in this city, in this county, we can't afford that people that are taking care of those that truly need help because they are disabled, but that these workers, these caregivers are not able to count that their gift of their life for these people they care for does not include healthcare benefits, and that there is some way to balance a little bit of an increase, but then you're gonna lose your healthcare. Healthcare should never be a bargaining chip, as if that's something you need to really hope to get, but you don't deserve. And unless we're in a boon, you're not gonna get it. Do what you can, please, to reconsider whatever deadline and bottom line you're working with to benefit the IHSS workers, these caregivers, with the insurance that they have been needing and will always need for what they do. They are not wealthy. Jennifer's doing a great job. She needs healthcare coverage. Thank you very much.
And this will be our last speaker.
Oh, Lord. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm a special case. I am the 2015 union member. Um, my insurance, if I don't have insurance, it will be a death sentence for me. Okay, let me explain. Um, I have leukemia, and I choose to work. I care for two ladies, and I take pride in what I do. I take very good care of them. And I want them to have a good quality of life, and I want to have one as well. And in taking care of them, I didn't realize that I wouldn't have insurance, that I wouldn't, my wages would not increase per the cost of living increase, all these different things that come into play, just being an IHS worker. And I look at all you distinguished men, and I know you're educated, or you wouldn't be up there. And I know that we can put this problem behind us. It's, it, it has to be a way. Because my medicine, just for 30-day, 30 pills for Sprite Cell, is $17,000 a month. No insurance would totally be a death sentence for me. I would like to know that you care enough and you're for me. I would like to know that you care enough, and you're compassionate enough to figure this out for us, so that we can continue to provide the care that we do to the people that we care for that are disabled and elderly. And we're trying to sustain their quality of life, but we also need to be cared for. And so, the fact that a fast food worker makes more than me, and some of the details of my job are different, it's scary not to have insurance. And in taking on this job, which I worked for IRS for over 20 years, and so, you know, you get insurance with them. It's not, none of these types of issues. And so, just the fact that I'm facing this is scary by itself. And so, I look at all these other IHS workers, some elderly, some not, and I think we have to choose whether we get insurance or a raise. Like, I think we deserve both, and in my mind, some kind of way. I know that you gentlemen can figure this out for us, and that we could put this behind us and work on a different issue, because I'm thinking that this, it has to be a way to solve this issue. It has to be a way. And the fact that I don't have $17,000 a month, but those pills keep me in remission, so that I can maintain a quality of life for myself and take care of my patients.
I thank you for being here, and thank you for sharing your comments. And for all those that are here with IHSS, we see you. We really appreciate the presentation, but I need to ask at this time, is there anyone here wishing to comment on an item that is not IHSS-related at this time?
Would that state auditor, your state auditor's report, read that?
I can't. So, so with that, I'm going to close. The, the public, I'm going to...
So, she doesn't have to come again? You always say you want new people. This is really difficult for her to come.
Yeah. I, I understand. I, and one thing, one thing about this next speaker, is she can call me, she's got my cell phone number, but I need to close the public portion at this time.
Okay. I just wanted you all to see my grandson.
I need to close the public portion with the IHSS item. We've given, I've given about 18 minutes. So, it's, it's very important. Yeah.
One minute? Can you just, she's already here.
Yeah, so this is our last speaker? Then I, I will absolutely allow this last speaker.
Thank you Nathan. I do know Nathan. I don't know any of the other ones of you, although I've read your names and heard your names before. But anyway, this is Leonidas Hill. He's screaming out because he has seizures. In addition to his autism, he has epilepsy. And so, you know, my daughter-in-law gets paid for caring for him. I don't, and I'm not looking to be paid. I'm grandma, but I do help the family a lot. We even recently bought two houses side by side. So, you know, I used to, as a teenager, I worked in a restaurant. I was called a soda jerk, if any of you older men know what that is. And, you know, I think back then, I was paid $1.50 an hour. But here, you know, fast food workers are getting 20 an hour, and these people who care for these children, which it's, it's a 24-hour situation. They need to get paid what's fair. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. With that, we're going to close the public portion.
This is Leonidas.
Yes, and actually, I've met him. So, thank you for bringing him. And with that, Clerk, next item, please.
At this time, you can open up to public comment for closed session items only.
So, we have just a handful of closed session items. Anyone here to, on closed session items? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. And County Council, do we need to, do we need to report out after closed session, or can we adjourn now?
Mr. Chairman, we do not anticipate any announcements following closed session, so if the Board chooses, it can adjourn following closed session.
All right. Excellent. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn following closed session. We're going to take Brandau's motion. Mendez's a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.